You couldn't be here, and Councilman Checo has a family emergency and will not be in. So, the rest of us are it.
Mayor.
I gotta leave at like 6:50.
Okay. Get right through this agenda then.
I'll draw a line through that.
Alright, so let's start off the council meeting follow-up. Is there anything from last week that we need to discuss or bring up?
Mr. Mayor, the one thing that I would suggest that we could probably address in item number seven, if you see on the agenda, is a follow-up item, that's for sure, but may not necessarily be tied to last week's council meeting or not, but in any case, I would like to have some conversation, if permissible, on the liquor stuff.
Prior to going into this?
No, as a part of that.
As a part of that, okay.
Heads up.
If I may, I thought you guys did a nice job responding to those concerns by those two citizens.
Oh, thank you.
Clarified the situation.
Appreciate that.
I don't know if they were satisfied with the response. Did you hear anything back?
We did not hear anything back, no sir.
The red duct tape?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
No, I'm not talking about the duct tape.
No, but I'm glad you brought that up. I do want to say something on that. There was, it was a comment brought up about the DDA and not having timely response and getting back to a couple people, business owners downtown, but in fact, the DDA did get back with us and actually showed us where, in fact, within 48 hours, it looked like on both occasions, that there was conversation that took place between them. So, I just want to put that out there that it wasn't as bad as what it was made to be. There was actual conversation that took place between them, and they showed us that.
And that's good. I was referring to the citizens talking about the replating.
Oh.
Those who let the detailed responses.
Thank you.
So, I guess all of those things were good.
Appreciate that.
Okay. So, we don't have anything else on the council follow-up, we'll move on to six cent survey results.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening, everybody. We are at the opposite of the six cent citizen survey, if you will. We've gotten data back and have gotten some good direction, in my opinion, and we are at the point where I think it would be appropriate to talk to council about the next steps, if you will, but to sort of review in broad strokes what we learned from that data is, we did learn that at this point in time, the voters would likely support a police station project, were it to move forward, and we do think that with some work, we could bolster that support if we were able to produce some type of price reductions, if you will, of that particular project. We also learned that, including Midwest on the ballot, and when I say Midwest, I mean Midwest Avenue, and that finishing phase, if you will, we indeed, as the exhibit shows on your screen here, we gained even more favorable support, not necessarily exclusive of the police station project being on the ballot, but indeed, if this project were included as well. So, in fact, of all the projects that were discussed throughout the county on the survey, Midwest Avenue gained the largest margin of support. Kind of moving backward, if I could, to the previous slide, the police facility, while not at 70-plus percent, was at 60-plus percent among the voters. So, the information that we need to gather in terms of an understanding of what the perspective is on this effort was gathered. Like I said, I don't want you to think that there's no work to do and that we, you know, should go ahead and assume everything is good in the valley here, but what I would say is, I do think we have been able to garner some data that would suggest taking the next steps would probably not be a bad idea. And what I mean by that is, as you all recall, we do need to take a question to the county commissioners, not only as the city of Casper, but also as the city of Casper and two-thirds of the communities here in the county. And so, while we represent one of the two-thirds, if you will, with your blessing, I would like to start that effort of, or continue that effort, however you want to look at it, of preparing that request to the commissioners and seeing if the rest of the communities are on board, based on what they've learned in their part of the survey, and make that official request. And so, my request would be whether or not council's on board with that, if you had other direction for me, and certainly we'd move in that accord.
I'd surely recommend we do it. I think we've got strong enough to support that we at least need to take the first step and get involved in it, because I must, I must say that I thought the survey was done very well.
Vice Mayor Loops.
So, was there any feedback provided, or was it simply just like voting dots? Because it's a little interesting to me that the majority of the Mills projects got, well, I guess it's a handful of them, I mean, those were closer down to like 40 and 30, like on the support, so I just didn't know if there was like any comments as to maybe why, or if we didn't ask for that feedback.
Madam Vice Mayor, Mr. Mayor, the design of the survey was really meant to be a fairly limited scope, as it relates to possibilities for the ballot, if at all. And clearly, there were projects that were, you know, enjoying a fairly large margin of support, and there were projects that did not. It would be my recommendation, as one voice among the many here, that the county will ultimately need to kind of sort through, that those projects that the populace, the voting population said, "No, we wouldn't support," that that shouldn't show up on the ballot. And for those that did, I would hope that those would be the ones that would gain sort of a priority position on the ballot.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead, Joe.
Now, this six cents, just for those projects, whether they will become permanent, or how long do we allow?
That's a very good question, Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson. This would be what we call a specific purpose excise tax, which means that depending on what the value of the ballot is, or what it is that the voters ultimately support, that tax would diminish and complete and go away once that value is collected. So, if, for whatever reason, the, you know, the police station project is the only project on the ballot, and we'll say it's at 40 million bucks, once that 40 million bucks is collected, the tax is removed, and those dollars would, you know, would not be assessed to the taxpayers beyond that 40 million dollars.
Do we have a, sorry, do we have an idea how long they'll apply?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, at this point in time, we do not have a clear view of how long the tax would be in place, mostly because we aren't aware of what the value of the proposal will be to the voters. And so, I wouldn't have a good feel for that, that life of that part of the tax portfolio.
Councilman Hopkins.
Yeah, going back to the last one of these that we had on the ballot, technically, the tax expires the month, the quarter in which you project you're going to reach it. So, if you reach it right at the end of the quarter, the tax would go away almost immediately, but if you happen to reach it, sometimes slightly earlier than that, the tax would remain until the end of that fiscal quarter.
Yeah, I think that, I think you're right, Council.
Where does the remaining tax money go to?
Whatever residual balance that there might be, would be required to be dedicated to the projects at hand, whatever projects are included in the initiative. So, what I have seen happen is the respective council, or councils, if you will, get together and pass a resolution that says, "Hey, because of the timing of the termination of the tax, it is anticipated that a million dollars is going to be collected, that million dollars will be dedicated in X, Y, and Z fashion relating to the project." Most popularly, you see a sort of reserve put together that helps to service the project, whatever that might be, and so on.
So, I guess a follow-up question there, real quick, is that if, in fact, we cut back, look at the police department, if we end up cutting back the cost on that, but then we have a residual at the end, we could take the highest, most important next step with the police station and take that residual and put it into that?
I absolutely think that that is an option for the council to consider, but I would certainly say that that residual would have to be dedicated to the project, whatever the project that would be.
I have another question.
Go ahead, Joe.
So, in the survey, it was clearly, uh, this is additional to the already established one cent tax, right?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I heard the question from.
So, this is a six cent, six cent tax. Now, this was the, in the survey, was it made clear that this was specifically to be used for, it was an additional tax to be used for these projects?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I thought that the language made that clear, that indeed it was meant to be only dedicated to these projects. Is that, is that the information you're reporting, Councilman?
Yes.
Okay.
So, Carter, if I remember the process, then you would be talking with the commissioners and the mayors of the other municipalities to go over their survey results and then try to come up with an agreement as to which would essentially make the cut and be on the ballot. And you would have to have two-thirds of the governmental entities pass a resolution approving the six cent going before the voters, which we would do this coming November, I assume.
Yes, sir. Correct, correct.
Assuming they all think that that's sufficient time and that this is worth trying.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I think that's an accurate assessment. The commissioners enjoy the authority to say yes or no, despite whether or not two-thirds are all in agreement, they can then, you know, exercise a veto, if you will, or agree and concur and allow for that ballot to come to pass.
And if I may for follow-up, then we would also have to find out if, in fact, the library board wanted to move forward with this at this time, because they operate more or less independently from commissioners, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that is correct, and they would not be a part of that two-thirds count, if you will. So, certainly, the communities would need to understand that that would be a part of the proposal to the voters, whether it be a singular proposal, you know, kind of independent of the rest of the communities, or tied into a proposal with the other communities, that is unclear at this point in time.
That is essentially the only project that the county has put forward, is the library?
Correct.
Although you could make the argument that all of these projects are county projects, since we're all citizens of the county as well.
Yeah.
Would you anticipate a time when you'd be able to come back to us with the results of your discussions with the entities?
Absolutely, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, we could certainly have a continuation of tonight's discussion as it relates to the, sort of the verdict, if you will, of the communities and the commission, at least, at least informally, and I would suggest that that would be kind of a, another moving point, if you will, for the resolution we would need from the council.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, absolute follow-up question. In the past, we've then had private entities come forward and essentially be the marketing agent, if you want to use that term, for the value of the tax, since we can't promote it, we can do education regarding what it would cost and why we think we need it, but then there would have to be some discussion of whether we would do that again, and who would step forward to lead that effort, and so that would be the next step, I guess.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that, I think that would be a part of the next steps that would need to be devaluated, and as you have alluded, that is an independent effort of interested citizens.
So, if anybody's listening to this, and you're so inclined, if we move forward. Okay, thank you.
So, you need a thumbs up for us to move to, with the commissioners, is that correct?
Mr. Mayor, that would be helpful, if council was so inclined, to give me that direction and/or blessing to continue this conversation with the county commissioners and the other communities.
If I may say one more thing, Mr. Mayor, I think there's two ways to look at this. You could look at this and say, "Well, the survey results suggest that, at least with this sample, that appeared adequate, we now have permission to move forward." That's one way to think about it. Another way to think about it is that a significant percentage of the community wants us to do this, and we'd be disappointed if we did not. In a way, you could almost view it as a mandate that we should move forward, as opposed to, "We're now allowed to move forward." Maybe it's a fine distinction, but I think we should feel almost obligated, based on these results, to move forward, given the margin of error in these percentages.
Okay.
Okay.
Councilman Fowler, we're just taking, or Johnson, we're taking a vote on that?
Um, I don't know where I'm at yet, so it'll be a maybe.
All right, start moving forward.
Thank you.
Sounds good.
Appreciate that.
Okay, move on to the capital budget review.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight, we are undertaking what really amounts to is one of the first budgetary discussions that we need to have, as we start the work and the labor of designing the fiscal year 21's budget. You all undoubtedly have looked at the data associated with the capital budget in the form of the notebooks that you received, as well as some of the electronic data that you were forwarded, and undoubtedly, you understand that there are a series of categories of projects that we hope you'll be supportive of and interested in, as we try to get things done here around the community. In the notebooks that you have, we have broken down the projects into three very broad categories, one of which is consistent with what we told you back in, oh, 2018, I suppose, when we went through the 1% discussions, we proposed to you a number of priorities and projects and so on, as it relates to an allocation of the four years of 1 cent 16. The 14.2 million dollars that you see broken out in your notebooks there lays out the list of projects that we believe is commensurate with what the direction was from that resolution development process for the implementation of 1 cent 16. And so, you see a list of those projects, that value adds up to, like I said, approximately 14.2 million dollars. Furthermore, there is another category of projects that are attributable to what it is that the enterprise funds are trying to accomplish and complete, and are consistent with what we told you about, at least in maybe broader terms, during the utility rate hearings that were held a number of weeks ago. For projects that didn't fit into that category and so forth, we did not include as a part of the list of what we call the enterprise fund's projects. So, that total amounts to just over 9.7 million dollars, and again, is consistent with the rate modeling that we provided to you several weeks, even months ago. We also have included an allocation of 1 million dollars from the opportunity fund to be dedicated to the redevelopment of the Goodstein lots for downtown Yellowstone District parking opportunities, the lease of which is being worked on still. As a matter of fact, we had a meeting today, Mr. Henley and I, on that very topic with the state of Wyoming. We also have a series of projects that came in over and above what we thought was appropriate for the direction of the 1 cent resolution, over and above projects that fit into the enterprise fund's rate modeling, and any other kinds of directives that you have given us to date. That amount of project funding that we are seeking your approval of is in the neighborhood of 1.1 million dollars, and would actually be extracted from existing funding sources like perpetual care revenue, like some of the project funds that are out there in residual fashion, but yet have been unencumbered or committed otherwise. Again, that is in the neighborhood of 1.1 million dollars, and you see that list in your notebook as well. We also included in your notebook projects that just simply fell out of any kind of recommendation status, just so you're aware of what projects may be on the near horizon, or even maybe even the far horizon. And at this point, we don't feel like we have enough steam behind us to really recommend for your approval in this budget cycle. Now, one of the things that I would tell you, particularly in light of some of the information that we've gotten here recently, as it relates to, you know, more global, energy-related economic conditions that we may be facing over the next year or so, is that indeed, particularly as it relates to 1 cent, if we find that 1 cent funds are not coming in to the extent that this prospectus would depend upon, we will be prepared to come forward and tell you, "Hey, we're not seeing the funds come in like they need to, therefore we suggest that X project, Y project, and Z project fall off the table for now, so that indeed, we can focus..." indeed we can focus on A project and B project and C project in order for that completion to occur. Now, indeed, in those scenarios where we need to have those conversations potentially, you absolutely get to disagree with the way in which staff has prioritized those projects, should we get to that point. And so we certainly would invite that conversation at that point in time. Much in a similar way, if you disagree with the way in which we prioritize the projects that are in fact in front of you now, or you believe that the projects that we have identified to be spent with 1 cent funding that we do anticipate collecting over the next year as being inconsistent with what you remember, that is absolutely the purpose of tonight's discussion and any other subsequent discussions that we may need to have on this topic. So please be aware that we recognize that this is a lot of information. We certainly do need your direction as it relates to putting the budget together, because capital comprises a significant portion of the spending that we anticipate over the fiscal year 21. But please don't think that if you didn't make your wishes known tonight, that the door has shut and we don't need to hear about capital again until May 21st, or whatever. So this is really a starting point, but indeed, if council feels strongly about one direction or another, we'd be very, very pleased to take that tonight. If it pleases the council, I've asked corresponding department heads to address some of the major themes and projects that this agenda proposes for the next year. And throughout any of that discussion, if you have questions or guidance you want to provide, by all means, please make sure we get that. Does that work?
Yep.
Just really quick, because I think I may be remembering something wrong. Didn't we have a handful of projects that we had to roll over from, like, that we couldn't complete in the prior year, but the funding rolled over with them? Is that factored into this in any way or no?
That's a really good question, Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor. We tried to handle the majority of those projects in the amendment that you just passed a couple of weeks ago. And so we hope we've captured the rollover-type projects. Undoubtedly, with regard to this agenda that we're, you know, seeking your approval for, there will be a similar amendment in the ensuing budget year that we will likely have to roll over as well. And so you can expect that a similar amendment will probably come later in the fiscal year. All right, so without further ado then, if it pleases the council, if I could invite Andrew up to walk us through, his Public Services Department and Utilities Department undoubtedly command a lot of the dollars that you're seeing here tonight.
Councilman Mayor, indeed they do. The big ones for public utilities include the secondary treatment, the water treatment plant that I know you have been out to, Councilman, and seen that's up close to $2 million project. Rolling stock remains a big capital investment for us in all of our funds, public utilities, solid waste, we get a new compactor, a new loader, new trash trucks, new street sweepers, and in the streets division, we get some new tandem snowplow loaders and a new snowbar. That giant piece of equipment you see that actually goes down the street, picks up those windrows. We've got that $3.6 million allocation for street projects. We'll use that report that you just heard about from IMS, or payment management report. We will marry that with the water and sewer main replacement needs that are also funded with 1 cent 16 for both water and sewer, so we make sure we're repairing the street and we're not going back the next day again digging up and putting water and sewer main in the same quarter. Those are some of the bigger ones. We'll start some design work on opening a new cell and closing a cell at the solid waste facility. That design works in the neighborhood of $200,000. That's in this fiscal year, proposed fiscal year budget. Those are the big projects for PSD. I can certainly answer any questions you might have on any specific ones, but those are all the bigger ones.
Councilman Powell.
I've got a couple, Andrew. On the utility-funded projects, page 89 in our book, we have a couple of them that I'm not quite sure what the difference is. One of them is the technology, computer software. This is all in bail fill, as I recall. We have $9,100 there, and down below on page 218 in the book, we have technology upgrades that seems to talk about the same thing for the same group. So I'm not exactly sure what.
I may have to defer to Pete. I don't have the.
It's page, I think it's page 189 is the discussion, and the other one is page 218.
Yeah, I think I can address that. Bail fill, yeah, the landfill operation is actually two separate funds, one for refuse collection, one for bail fill.
Okay.
And so actually they're split.
Similar hardware, just different fund.
Exactly, yes. Each fund pays for its own technology. So whereas the one on 189 is for refuse collection, the project on page, we should just refer to, 218, I believe, is for bail. So each one of them has their own needs, it's always put out the cards.
If I may, I've got two other quick ones. The next one, what is a posi-shell applicator?
A posi-shell applicator is a very specific piece of equipment. It's actually, it's a cement slurry that you can use to line drainage stitches, so you prevent ongoing erosion.
Okay.
But a posi-shell is almost like a name brand, so.
Oh, okay. Then the other one I had, we had thermal monitors for the bail fill, and in the estimate in the text on page 220, they had a rough estimate of $100,000, and there's a budget of $236, as I recall. Yeah, this is for infrared detection, and we've got up on the top under description, we're saying $100,000, approximately $100,000. And then the technology budget for that particular one is $236.
Mayor, Councilman, first of all, kudos, Councilman, for reading the capital budget. But I think you've various money budgeted in this fiscal year for that project, and our estimate was way off, so we're budgeting additional money for next fiscal year.
All right. All have, thank you.
Councilman Powell. Andrew, we were all surprised and a little disappointed about the consultant's report on the condition of our roads and how much money it was going to take to catch up with that. If I remember correctly, he was saying $7 million a year to, if you want to really make any progress over time, and we're about staying at about half that. So I'm sure he wrestled with how much to ask for and how many projects we could reasonably complete over span of time. Can you tell us about your thought process between the consultant's report and what you're asking for?
Mayor, Council, obviously, our allocation is from 1 cent 16, and that, in my opinion, is unlikely to change. So we will utilize that report to the best of our ability and make the most of the repairs that we can do, but you're right. I believe that streets are underfunded, but we will spend the money as wisely as possible.
Mr. Mayor, can I add on to that, if I could? Councilman Powell, I appreciate that question, and we've actually gotten questions from the community about that as well. While I don't know that we can necessarily reverse course with respect to what it is that the city has committed to in the 1 cent 16 resolution and defund other priorities to reallocate towards streets, I do think that that data provides us two pieces of information that will help us in this course. For one, if we realize in the study that what the study views as being priority versus what we had communicated initially in terms of a project that might be a lower priority, we would ask that council be open to the possibility of having to come forward and readdress some of those streets that we initially thought would be of more importance. And so that may have opened our eyes, if you will, to that possibility. But secondly, what I would say is, as it relates to a potential 1 cent 17, indeed, this data, which in my opinion is data that we have not had the value of in past years to the extent that we do now, could very easily drive a lot of that conversation, which may result in a disproportionate share of 1 cent monies being dedicated to streets and trying to catch up on that sweet spot in the depreciation cycle that we learned about with the consultant. And so I would ask that that level of conversation be considered as well, obviously in future years.
And Mayor, Council, conversely, if we know we have to replace a water main or a sewer main or a storm sewer main, you may see us also allocate some street money to that project just to make it whole when we walk away and we don't have to come back. And it may not be as high a priority as was identified in that report, but it's an economy of scale, everything. We're in there, we're going to fix underground utilities, we're going to fix the street at the same time.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And speaking of the pipes, you know, you talk about replacing the clay pipes. Do you have any sense of how far along we are with that? Because my sense is, once you put the PVC in, you're in pretty good shape for a long period of time. How much do we have left?
Mayor, Councilman, that's an excellent question, but just to sure, we have probably 70% of our system still, sanitary service system is probably still clay pipe.
It's going to take a while.
Yeah, it will take a while.
Mr. Mayor, if I could turn some time over to Mr. Cortez to kind of walk us through some of his major initiatives, that'd be great.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, probably one of the biggest projects that I have coming up is one that's kind of a wild card at this point. I think I spoke to a few of you just in passing. We have light poles around the community that, you know, sit around our ball fields, and we had one of those that tipped over at Crossroads this winter, which really sparked a lot of interest for us to figure out why it did that. And when we got into the pole and removed it, took it down, it just cocked over, you know, maybe like at a, you know, not quite a 45-degree angle. We noticed there was a bunch of rust and scale that was at the base of that thing. Basically, what it told us was it's rotten from the inside. So what we did is we hired a group that just completed the work last week with doing non-destructive testing to all the poles, which is about 40 poles in our community, to kind of determine what the scale of the problem is. I visited with that consultant today, just kind of getting a feel for what the preliminary results show. They said for sure we have about half a dozen poles that are going to need to be addressed very soon. The reason I say it's kind of a wild card is we don't have that full report, and we won't have it till probably next month. So we're not really sure what that looks like. But each pole runs about $35,000 for the pole plus the lighting fixtures that go on top of it. As a result of that, Carter and Finance have kind of set aside a lot of the money that we'd normally see perpetual care in the form of that interest that's about $500,000 a year. About $400,000 of that is just kind of sitting there, kind of waiting for that report and for us to really get our arms around what the problem is in the community with regard to the poles. So that's probably the biggest one that I think is probably kind of keeping me up a little bit at night. But I have a number of other projects. If you don't have any questions on that particular one, I'll kind of go through some of the other ones that we got to be asleep. It's kind of a common question. People go forecast, but we have on there an amount of $35,000 to do dobbing. A lot of people, including myself, what's dobbing? That's basically that chinking material that goes in between logs. So these are for the historic fort buildings. You don't just kind of stuff concrete in there and stuff and hope it comes out okay. We hire somebody that's usually in the front range area that comes up, and they put together the actual mixture that you would have used back in the day to make it specific to, you know, the fort buildings. And so that's one of the projects there. Security cameras for the event center is something that's pretty high that we've identified. I will be putting in, we're currently working on a grant with the Wyoming Department of Homeland Security to secure funding for that. That's in the form of $85,000. Although we typically don't get the whole amount, we usually get something. And if you recall, we got that for male detectors for the event center, which council was nice enough to pay for half, and then basically grants pay for the other half. We also need a bucket truck in the form of $150,000. Funding source that we're looking for that would be out of our weed and pest reserve account. And basically, our bucket truck that we use is out of date, it's old, it's, obviously, if you're just a piece of equipment, you don't want to fail, it's one of the ones you don't, because you're suspended in the air, and so that's something that we're looking at getting done. Hogodon, we need to get the wood sealed up the hogodon, I realize it's a new building, but the architectural wood features of that building will always need some kind of maintenance. And what we're hoping for is we'll identify a product that'll hold up better than what we had, basically, when the lodge was built. Will it last forever? No. We're hoping that it'll be something that'll last longer than what we currently have, meaning the harsh conditions up there just are, just tearing the wood apart. Something we want to address sooner than later, so that, you know, the wood's still viable and will last us for generations to come. We need some new equipment for the golf course. Yes, we're asking for $55,000 out of the golf course reserve account. Basically, that reserve account holds about $150,000 in it. Currently, we're looking at extracting $55,000 out of it to buy three fairway mowers. And basically, those are to mow the fairways on a regular interval and just that day-to-day maintenance that it takes to run a golf course. I, of course, asked my staff to need three. They only said, no, you need three. I mean, you're just doing that much mowing on a daily basis. They're all deployed at once, daily, and they're doing different chunks of the course at a time. And the last project I have that's in this capital budget, some emergency batteries we need for the ice arena. Basically, either replace fixtures and/or the batteries for those fixtures. Typically, we find it's cheaper to just buy a whole new fixture than it is just to replace the batteries, those types of things. But we have about 20 of those in most facilities, and so that comes off to about $10,000. So what we're looking for there. And that would be one of the capital projects I have on my plate next year.
Mr. Mayor, can you, remember, Tim, did we supply funding to do the temporary fencing for these, what did you call the small dog parks in the parks?
Pocket parks.
Pocket parks. You had the funding needed to do those trials?
Well, we didn't include it in the budget, per se. We did talk about, I think, my recollection was, was at a later time, we were going to talk about that. So, you know, to me, if we wanted to discuss that at this point, but if you recall, I was about $27,000 to be one pocket park that would be temporary and even around the community if we so choose. But to me, it's just one of those things that, you know, could we address it in here for sure? Could we address it in other ways we could as well?
We never made any decisions in that form, though.
There was no comment, Councilman.
And then, the big ticket item for me that I don't know what to do about, and maybe you can reassure me, the lift at Hogodon. We keep hearing that it's antiquated, it's difficult to get parts for, and I don't know if it's, if there is a failure possibility for that lift, which of course would shut down the ski area. The last thing we want to do is come up with something new when you made such a difficult set of decisions to deny things that look like they also are needed. But obviously, you decided that we didn't need to put that in this capital budget. Can you tell us where you think that we stand with that?
Sure. Mr. Mayor, Councilman, great question. Just to bring you up to speed a little bit, on that particular project, council last year allocated $250,000 to that project for the design, to kind of get our arms around the scope of what that would look like. So we put it out for RFP in the late fall, and we had no respondents back to the RFP, which wasn't really surprising to us, because what you really see a lot of is, the design group is within the company that sells you the lift. So they just say, how many lineal feet of lift are you looking for? And you say, I want this many. And they go, okay, this is what we could sell you to get you from point A to point B, with kind of that train features you're looking for. So we still have, the good news is we sell the, you know, the $250,000 sitting there. What we'll do is we'll roll that over and carry it over to next budget year. What we originally thought on that project was, of course, we didn't get the scope and the design done, so we don't really know what to come to you and ask for. So at this point, we just have $250,000, and we really need to figure out what it is we truly need for a lift. Our current lift is safe. The downside is our current lift doesn't have a lot of the safety features that other lifts that you get off the shelf nowadays. lifts that you get off the shelf nowadays. So I think that we need to come back to, with what that request looks like, because I, I really feel bad if I come to you and say we need too many dollars, because that would be a hard wrestle. How do you find too many dollars? But then I really don't know if that's adequate or totally overfunded or what that looks like. So I, I, I don't think it's gone away. Um, one of the other things that we have been looking at is if there's any, any economies of scale that we can get with any other regional ski resorts that we could purchase a lift with them and concert and kind of get, uh, I don't want to say two for one, you know, because that'd be too sweet, but you know what I'm saying? Something that would, you know, because we've heard of that around the country, where two or three resorts will get their dollars together and say, hey, we want to get them from so-and-so. What can you do for us? And they see great success and reduction of cost doing it that way. So we have a variety of things on our plate, but, um, you know, for us to come with a, with a request that I really don't know what it would be at this point without that expertise that we're hoping to get from that RFP that then would get fulfilled, it would be kind of a shot in the dark and probably unfair.
Sure assessment that we can, in all likelihood, run it for another five years if we have to. Of course, I've got too much to ask.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman, I, I, I would probably feel uneasy with five years. Um, I think taking a year, keeping the two hundred fifty thousand dollars encumbered and kind of, and waiting for that project, I think, it makes me feel better, because we used to have zero. So to have that chunk of change sitting there waiting for more, more knowledge and more expertise to weigh in on the thing, I think that that makes me feel good, because then I can come to you in, in subsequent years and really give you a sniper's view of what we exactly need and what it's going to cost us.
It, it just, just seems to me that we should be saving some money over time to gradually get to the point where we can. And, um, because it is, it's a big ticket item. When the time comes, you're not, it's not something you're going to be able to put into a single-year budget.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, I'd like to weigh in just a little bit on Council and Paul's concerns, because I'm concerned about getting a new lift up at the ski area too, but for a lot of different reasons. And number one, I think that the real thing that we need to emphasize is that that lift is totally one hundred percent safe. I wouldn't ride on it if it wasn't safe. I wouldn't let my family members ride on it if it wasn't safe. It is safe. Uh, when you ask, well, how long can this keep running for? It can keep running as long as you want to keep building, getting new parts built to run it. Uh, you know, at Antelope ski area, they, they're running it virtually a lot like it. Riblet brand chairlift, Riblet's no longer in business. They needed a new gearbox. They had to hire a, a machine shop insured to build that. Uh, you know, we can keep doing that forever. The thing that you need to realize about that ski lift, it's basically a nineteen-sixties vintage lift. Uh, because we bought it used when we installed it in the late, late seventies, early eighties. And it's just, it's obsolete. And it does need to be a priority to get, to get something else going there. And I'm well in favor of moving forward with that. Uh, but I, I think that, you know, Tim's approach to this is really, you know, what we need to be doing, kind of methodically moving forward. And, uh, I, of course, hope that that movement is faster rather than slower, but, you know, but it, uh, that, that's where I think that that kind of is really, you know. Tim probably cringes when I start talking about anything. The whole world cringes when I talk.
It's good for people to know that it's old, but it's safe. I appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, do you mind if I ask Andrew a question here real quick?
Yes, I'd like to.
Do I? Okay, I, I, uh...
What are you doing?
Thank you. One of the, uh, I'm, I'm referencing page two seventeen when we're talking about the, the, um, the baler plates, the wear plates and so on. We had purchased the plasma table in order to drive down our annual costs. Um, I understood that those annual costs were less than eighty thousand dollars a year, or am I mistaken?
Let me take a look at that sheet very quickly. I think for us to get those wear plates, and I'm going back in my memory bank, uh, Mayor, Councilman, and City Mayor. But I think that is the cost for those wear plates and for us to machine them.
Okay.
I think for us to have it farmed out was substantially more than that. And it, it was going to take us a little over three years for that plasma table to pay for itself.
Okay, so your, your understanding, if I may, Mr. Mayor, is that the eighty thousand dollars does anticipate the benefit that the plasma cutting table would, would have for us? Okay.
Yes. And that plasma cutting tail, I don't think, you've approved the sole source. I don't believe this comes to Council yet.
Yes. All right. Mr. Mayor, do you mind if I ask Chief Solberg to kind of address a couple of his too? That's all right.
Mayor, Mayor, Councilmembers, the Fire Department's bringing forward proposed, I believe there were seven items on our capital request. Uh, the largest being another fire engine. Uh, we did fund, uh, one last year, or actually this current year, which, uh, because of the spec and design of it and the timing of bill, what, what we're proposing to do and we're bringing forward to you is to do both of the engines, uh, so the specs can be the same as we move that forward. But on this proposed, uh, document, there's just a one fire engine for six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Along with that, we, uh, also put in thermal imaging cameras to replace those. Those are obviously the, uh, thermal cameras that we use when we're inside searching for people and fire. Uh, first alert sent, uh, first end alerting system for station one, which would bring it, uh, essentially into compliance with the other stations that we have. Uh, it is partially funded to, uh, see how we can get that project going before we look at any additional funding, since that is our oldest station. And we're not certain when that's going to be, uh, replaced. Uh, we also have turnout gear replacements, which is typically an annual thing that we do. Uh, in the current budget year, uh, we have a replay, are actually purchasing a second set of bunker gear for our people, which we'll be bringing that forward to you, uh, here in a couple of months. And then we also put in a turnout gear extractor, which essentially takes the bunker gear, extracts all the carcinogens, uh, from the actual gear after it's been exposed to firefighting activities. And we're going to be doing a couple of those in the next, uh, well, this whole long cycle. We also put in there, uh, the plymo vent for station two. And when that station was built, we obviously didn't have the new brush tube. And what that is, it extracts the diesel fumes from the station as it starts up. And that's typical with all the other stations, um, that we operate. And the last item I have on there is the scoop stretchers. And what that is, is replacing the traditional backboards that we do. Because of medical protocols, it's, it's a little bit different device that we use. And that would replace all of our, uh, items for that. With that, that's the, the big items in the Fire Department proposed capital.
Thank you. No questions?
Actually, I do. Let me, with talking about the scoop stretchers, we know, how many of the stretchers that does the, uh, compression, how many did you give of those? I don't remember and I apologize.
Okay. And that was a Zoll Autopoles, and we, we bought seven of them.
Seven of those, okay.
Yes.
All right. Um, Ms. Belsa, if I could ask you to cover some things, and then maybe, uh, Ms. Becker, if you have any, or Chief McFeeters, we can go in that order. That's all right.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, members of council, um, I have a few under information and technology. So we have, um, the audiovisual equipment in council chambers, which is outdated, um, out of date. It was from two thousand fifteen. And part of our charter franchise fees, uh, pay for that upgrade. So that is one. We have server and equipment upgrades. And under that umbrella, we have, uh, the SQL database. Uh, that's one of the things that we need to upgrade. UPS batteries, which help us, um, if there's a power outage, then tho- those batteries are needed to keep us going. And then storage data, uh, for our data growth, to do continuous backups. We, our, storage needs continuous growth to do that. So that is part of our server and equipment upgrades. And then the other thing we have under IT is fiber optic network. So we're proposing, um, fiber optic for solid waste and wastewater treatment plant. Um, currently they're on wireless communication, which seems to be adequate, but we do have outages. So we're hoping to, uh, get that fiber optic network, um, on that for the first phase. And, um, funding will come from utilities on that. And then the second phase, we're hoping to include Metro Animal, um, control or Metro Animal, the, the kennel out there. They're also using wireless communications. And there have been times that that facility has had to shut down because of, um, not having the, the network availability. So those are the items that I have under information technology. And then under buildings and structures, I have a, a few things under there as well. Um, one of the, the items listed is the AEDs and buildings. So those are, um, they all need replaced in all of our city facilities for the AEDs. I think it's close to ten years old, um, maybe for our AEDs. So that's a safety concern, why we have that down. Uh, Lansing field, the, the deck is badly warped, and so we also believe that that is a safety concern. And that's why that is on there. Um, I think we're going to look at what funding sources we have available, if there was anything with, um, like grant funding or any like funding that people could, um, the users or, um, I'm sorry, Tim, what can I give with the...
User groups.
Okay, good. Oh, yes, okay. User groups might be able to help us to fund that, uh, replacement of the deck. And then, um, we have flooring at the senior center that we need to replace as well. We believe that's a tripping hazard. So we're looking, uh, to, right now in the current budget, I believe there's, uh, enough money to do the, the flooring that is on our current project. And then we're looking to expand that a little bit further. The carpet, there's a, from what I understand, like a slight incline in the, where the carpet is. So we're looking at replacing that flooring. Um, and then there's another huge thing that isn't on, included in your books, I don't believe. Um, and this, it's kind of a recent development, but it's also continuation from, if you remember, last summer, we had the HVAC, some chiller problems. So chiller or compressor?
Oh, sorry, I'm, it's compressors.
Compressors, okay. So the, the compressors, we had one that failed and we replaced it. So we've been kind of trying to, um, have boundaries on it and keep it going. Um, but we have recently, since Matt, uh, Thomason, our new building, building manager, buildings and structures manager, came in last fall and slayed my lap, um, that's where I kind of dropped the ball on keeping that project active. Um, so he's recently talked to me about it and he got a quote for two hundred thousand dollars. And that would be to replace the whole system and not just trying to, um, replace it by, um, the, the individual units. Another important aspect to this is that it's using that refrigerant that we were using at the ice arena or the ice plant. Um, so as you all heard earlier, that's, um, very expensive and something that we want to get out of doing. So that's why we're looking at replacing the whole HVAC system at the senior center. Um, again, there, it was not included, I don't believe it's included in the, the notebook. We had a meeting, um, just last Friday, uh, Friday to Carter's concern, because it was something that I had kind of overlooked. So I apologize for that.
But on that note, we do think that we have a solution that could, um, could give us some time to generate the full funding necessary to go through and do a complete renovation of the HVAC at the senior center. So, uh, we're going to deploy those alternatives and, uh, see how they work, because the reality is, if we did, even if we wanted to today, move forward and try to do a full revamp of the, of the system, we still wouldn't be done until probably September or October. So, uh, it makes sense to deploy those alternatives and, and safeguard the system as much as possible, get us through the summer and then bring forward a full-blown rehabilitation of that system overall.
What preventive measures, because I remember receiving numerous emails regarding the seniors having a really difficult time during the sun, that short period of summer we had. But they were using fans, they were using everything they possibly could to keep our past generation that set the bar for us today, didn't sound like we were taking very good care of them. And sorry to be kind of a jerk right now about that, but when it comes to my, the seniors, I have the utmost respect for them, because they set, they, they're the ones that paved the way for us right now. So to hear that we're going to look into it, we might not have it next, this summer, sounds like we may have it next summer. That really bothers me, no offense. And I've emailed you about that too, that, that is a huge concern of mine, that we'll put money in many other areas, but we're not putting money where our family fathers are at, in a sense. I guess what my, again, my comment is, how are we going to truly take care of them this summer then, if we're not going to redo that? Because I thought that was part of the plan when we emailed. So if you don't mind me asking.
No, I don't. I don't mind. Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, uh, what we had done last summer is replaced some condensers that had gone out on us and caused the problems that, you know, many of you heard about last summer. The idea now is to replace other condensers that we think could be problematic, albeit operable currently. So the, the safeguards that we're taking right now is, we're going to go ahead and replace some of those condensers that we think are going to give us the same kinds of fits, potentially. Be ahead of it all and, and not allow it to crater on us before we react. The other thing that we're going to do is we're going to replace, uh, some of the, uh, I, I want to call them voltage regulators, but that's not the right term, in order to prevent any sort of short-circuiting and so on, that could cause other electrical problems and other mechanical failures, to, uh, to prevent that outright. And so if there are issues with respect to the electricity or wiring or faults that give out on us or whatever, this other implementation should prevent that as well, so that we don't have those premature unforeseen things occur that would kill even new condensers, should that type of malfunction take place. So we, we believe that those problems will be mitigated with regard to this, this, uh, these safeguards that we're taking. Uh, we're anticipating that design work and some of that other forethought that we need to deal with the, the overall system, uh, is, is needed throughout this, this summer. And, uh, if necessary, bring forward a recommendation that would reconstruct the entire system. I, I'm not convinced that a reconstruction of the entire system is necessary at this point, but where we do, uh, believe that we may have some weaknesses in the system, uh, those should be taken care of. And, and I don't expect that we're going to have problems this summer.
It's going to be the price difference. I would, I guess I'd like to know of the condenser and the, uh, volt charge, the price of those compared to a brand-new system. What's the difference? I mean, how big a difference is the two of those?
With regard, Mr. Mayor, if I could, with regard to, uh, the implementations that we're talking about, we're talking about, uh, in the neighborhood of ten thousand, twelve thousand dollars, certainly less than twenty thousand, right?
Per chiller or per condenser, ten thousand, possibly, right?
Per condenser?
Less, less than.
Do you want to answer that question then, for me, please? You can stand up. Thank you.
Mayor, councilmembers, the, the price per compressor to replace it runs generally between five and seven thousand dollars apiece. The lead time on those, um, those pieces of equipment, it's around two, three weeks, maybe four if it's in a bad situation. Um, and so we were going to, um, there's a couple of them that have been out, or one of them Um, and so, we were going to, um, there's a couple of them that have been out, or one of them that was out already. We're planning on replacing that one immediately, just so that the air conditioning system is up to full strength, um, and is operating optimally. Last summer, um, the system had motor savers put on them, which is basically a small surge protector that would protect only certain pieces of the equipment, and it's, it's basically the very end of the line. Um, the option that I brought forward to city manager, um, was to put a surge protection system at the head end, where all the electricity comes into the building. Um, one of the major things that has, um, plagued the system over the past couple of years has been surges. Um, there's a lot of power surges in that part of town, and there was also, uh, some lightning strikes in that area, and that's what contributed to the premature failure of a lot of the compressors, which was the cause of most of the problem. Um, the motor savers should help with that, but by putting that surge protection system at the head end, where all the power comes into the building, that offers another layer of protection against the power surges and old lightning strikes or anything like that. And then that'll protect everything, not just that air handling equipment, the, the heating and air conditioning equipment, but also computers, phones, kitchen equipment, all the, everything else in the building, so.
What does that run?
Uh, from the proposal, or the estimate that we got earlier, um, I believe it'll be right around five thousand dollars to do that, maybe a little bit more, because some of the engineering, electrical engineering work for that was combined in with the rest of the engineering for the equipment replacement. Um, but I would say, I'm, my guess is between five and ten thousand dollars, um, to design it and install it.
So, we got roughly five to ten thousand for that, and how many condensers are you needing to replace?
Three, or two, I'm sorry, 'cause we replaced one last fall, so we have two, there's a total of three.
There'll be one, one immediately, and it, it, I don't see any reason why they would necessarily fail, um, a- as long as they are being protected from the, the main danger, the main threat that has been, um, the main threat to them over the last couple of years. Um, but I am gonna have my staff here over the next, um, weeks or months, go through them with a fine-tooth comb, inspect the equipment and, and get a better idea of where actually everything is. If they see any premature wear, uh, potentially with the compressors, then that may, um, trigger the need for, for additional. But at this point, um, all I know of is that there's one that's out currently.
So, you're looking at just get one, so we're looking at twenty thousand?
Potentially, yeah.
Potentially, compared to two hundred, okay. That's what I was.
Well, and thank you, Mr. Councilman. I would say that if we were talking about a complete refab of the entire system, probably be more along the lines of what we experienced at the Ash Street Building, which was in the neighborhood of a quarter of a million dollars. So, we're talking about a twenty thousand dollar investment now, that I feel very comfortable moving forward with, compared to a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar investment, that I don't think the data is there to show that we necessarily need that. So, uh, we, I'd like to take that work up and see what that looks like, and if we need to bring a proposal that would, uh, request that, I would have no problem bringing that forward and seeing what, what you think of it.
All right, 'cause my mind is, it is worth it when it comes to our elderly people, so, but I get where you're coming from, and that's why I was going.
Sure, you bet, you bet, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I, so, i- i- when the system was fully operational, it did an adequate job. Is that, 'cause the building's been there for, what, fifteen, twenty years now?
Yeah, I'd say, I'd say so.
I- is that a, is that a fair statement, that if it's working, it does the job?
I, I would say so, absolutely.
So, you just have fifteen, twenty years?
Well, how old is the senior center?
Uh, it, do you have the vintage, what, fifteen, twenty years?
Um, two, so, yeah, sort of, right.
So, technically, it'd be the HVAC or the system is pretty much run its course almost, too, though, then.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, Councilman, that, that's the work that we need to do. Uh, before we go off and spend two-hundred-and-fifty, three-hundred thousand dollars, I think, uh, it would behoove us all to do the due diligence necessary to make sure that investment is, is, you know, ready and, and we understand what the issues are and everything else. I, I wouldn't wanna recommend it otherwise.
Councilman Hewitt.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I don't have so much of a question, but, uh, last week, when I was at home enjoying myself coughing and sneezing, I, I did watch on Channel one ninety-two, and I really was impressed with the, the quality of that production. And certainly, I wanna compliment everyone, I think all of you have a great future in television, so. But, uh, but I, I was really kinda impressed with that system, uh, that was pretty neat.
Thank you.
Honorable mayor, members of council, three of my six, uh, proposals made it through the cut, I hope to you all. The first is, um, actually within the engineering division report. It is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar drainage project at Life Steps Campus. We have had some negative drainage affecting the basements of Building E and F, which are the primary residential, um, facilities on the campus that the Casper Housing Authority has put great work into to get filled, and there's been some recent stories on the front page of the paper about Building E having, um, a partnership with the school district. So, again, it's the basement levels that we wanna do the two-hundred-thousand-dollar drainage improvements on, so that, um, that we've got some soft and wet plaster, and then those buildings are very old, and so we wanna get that reversed. So, two hundred thousand on that. The second one that's on mine is under the CATSIE, um, header, and what we are looking to do is to replace a nineteen-year-old conversion bus. Um, this bu- this bus van, pardon me, is used, um, it's four-wheel drive, to help back up the CATSIE fleet of door-to-door service. Our CATSIE buses are not four-wheel drive. This conversion van has, um, nine seats and it's wheelchair-equipped. But again, with the age at nineteen years, as you can imagine, it is, um, it's out of its useful life. Those, um, retail for about seventy-two thousand dollars. We are submitting a grant to YDOT, which we are very optimistic we will receive. Thus, the city would be responsible for the fourteen-thousand-dollar match, um, that we would need to pay. So, that is one of my second proposals. The third, which, um, actually came forward through our volunteers at the Metro Animal Shelter. The volunteers who are out walking the dogs for us, um, typically have taken the animals out of the shelter, and over the years walked them up and down Metro Road, which is now at forty miles an hour. And there has always been concern, um, for the safety of the volunteers, as well as, um, the animals themselves, either from being able to run off or potentially being hit by flying debris and just grit out there. And so, what we proposed, the volunteers, again, worked with us on this concept, is a one-mile path around the shelter facility. We would do the work in-house, and it would be a base course that's laid down with, um, what Mr. Napier asked for was a weed barrier underneath. So, again, it'll be just an attractive little course, so that the, uh, volunteers can walk the animals around the shelter and a little bit more security, and we do have a wonderful group of volunteers that are pumped about that, and that is right at eleven thousand on your proposal.
Mr. Mayor. Councilman Paul.
Just talk, they're talking about the CATSIE, uh, rolling stock. Are we on schedule as far as keeping up with replacing those vehicles? 'Cause I know some of them are pretty, pretty far along.
Your honor, members of council, we are on, um, what was it, we're on cap for replacing those. We are, um, limited, the, um, DOT requires an FTA a certain year on replacing, and we have caught up with that. We've got two that are brand-new right now, we'll have two coming immediately, I believe, in the month of July for fiscal year twenty-one. But again, those are all part of our approved budgets and partnership with CATSIE. So, we are up on what we can replace and when we can replace it, yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, thank you, members of the council. Um, you'll recall that, that Metro Road does not have any sidewalks along the side of it. And so, I was a little alarmed to learn that we have our volunteers with animals on a tether, uh, you know, walking alongside that traffic, and, and in many ways, in the traffic. And so, uh, while obviously that project is not, uh, that significant on the grand scheme of your entire agenda, I, I, I do appreciate the forethought that that project, uh, included to get those volunteers and our animals off that street and, uh, and get them, uh, separated from that, uh, that traffic corridor, if you will, so, um, I appreciate that, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you for the hard work that you're doing to sit through a, a difficult financial year, we certainly appreciate that. The police department has four main projects that are, that are being submitted for your review. Two of those are large-ticket items. First one is gonna be our, our fleet request, roughly nine-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, as many of you are aware, we've augmented the police force with the addition of the school resource officers. Um, time and attrition has had an impact on our fleet. Um, so, we are at the point right now, um, because of these impacts, when the current officers that are hired and are completing training, when they are out of their training and we put them in their vehicles, we will have no more vehicles available for spares. In other words, there won't be that's not occupied. So, one is, when one is damaged in a, in a crash, when that DUI driver takes out our vehicle, or when one is in the shop, we're out of, we're out of those backup vehicles. And so, we've kinda front-loaded, uh, a larger, uh, fleet purchase this time to make sure that we have fully equipped our officers and have a few in, in reserve. Uh, the nature of, you know, the police fleet has changed, the technology needs that come with them now are substantial, uh, so that the cost of, of the vehicle is the cheap part, it's the equipment that we have to put into it. So, to, to reduce the cost that we're incurring on this, I, I have kind of stressed with our people, we're, we're hanging on to these vehicles for as long as we can, as long as those vehicles are safe, and the, the garage is, is helping us achieve that goal. 'Cause every time we try to replace, on install and reinstall that equipment, um, we, we're just losing money doing that. So, we're keeping these vehicles as long as we can, uh, but this, this purchase brings us back up to strength, giving us a couple in reserve, so that when the natural occurrence happens, we're, we're not in a hardship there. The, the largest ticket item is unequivocally is the, uh, second installment on the, trying to put money aside for the, the design and ma- and building of a police facility. So, that one's in there, that's, that's similar to last year's budget, where we're just putting that, making that money available for the necessary costs to undergo the construction of a new police facility, the design, the acquisition of things that we need to do on that. Um, we, the next one, it was one of the critical ones that we were hoping for, is the Spillman Arrest Module, and that is the, the software package that, that combines with our records management system and our dispatching system that allows the officers, every, every time we arrest, so that, so that we're not refilling out a whole nother set of documents just to book somebody in and wasting all of that employee time. This is the module that helps us kinda self-populate that, so it speeds up the amount of time that an officer is taking in the jail to complete the necessary judicial documents that are necessary, uh, and get them back out on the streets. So, that money is going to kinda speed up our reporting and documentation process. The last part of that, uh, of our projects is the off-highway vehicle, that's part of, that's, that's one-half of our program to begin to, uh, facilitate a more effective downtown parking enforcement. Uh, rather than trying to equip a, a, a full-blown vehicle, um, we wanna have that off-highway vehicle that's fast and efficient, uh, for use in the downtown area, to help us efficiently, uh, provide parking enforcement for the downtown area.
Mr. Mayor, uh, one of the, uh, if I could, uh, one of the, kind of the bubble projects, if you will, uh, of the list that you find on page two-twenty-two, that would coincide with the piece that you've just recommended, is a forty-thousand and do- uh, dollar investment for a license plate reader system. The, uh, that system really probably should be included with the, what'd you call, off-highway vehicles?
Yes.
Yes, OHB, that really would, uh, amount to a, a, you know, a, a smaller, more adept vehicle moving around downtown to take note of what, uh, cars are parking illegally and inappropriately or whatever. This LPR would be a nice addition to that, that feature, and would really help us to live up to the commitment that we've made to, uh, enforce downtown parking more appropriately and efficiently. So, uh, while I'm, I'm, I'm not real wild about trying to pull projects from the not-recommended list, it probably is one that warrants some, uh, serious consideration.
Councilman Paul.
I, I'd kinda support that, because we, we heard from the get-go that, uh, we don't really have a parking problem, but we've got an enforcement problem. And from the gentleman that we, you had come in, talked to us about, you know, the technology that's available and so forth, this is a, a reasonable addition, and I, I guess I would ask that we consider that.
Mr. Mayor, Lewis.
I think I'm getting stuff mixed up, but was the license plate reader the one that you said that you kinda had hoped that technology would get better, as far as what was co- available during our previous discussions? Or am I mixing up technologies?
You, you're remembering that correctly, um, so we have, we have tried it here in the, in the past, just as recently as two thousand and nine. We tried it here, what we found is we had infinite troubles with the various license plates that are out there. The technology has continued to improve. There is a, an operate, uh, a, the product that we're recommending is in operation right now in Cheyenne. It is perfectly reading all of these different states, but most importantly, the Wyoming states. Uh, with that bucking horse on there, it, it has tended to confuse them. And this system is proven to be effective in Cheyenne, so we're at the point where we think we've got enough information that we can recommend that we proceed with this one, versus others that have been, you know, in, in my career, three times we've tried and, and all three were failures, but that technology's improved, this one is working in our state.
Okay, just one more question, because I wanna be clear about this for transparency. So, I believe we set some aside in the twenty-twenty budget period, so we're also setting aside three-point-four for the police station in the twenty-twenty-one period. So, when we settle on that final price, let's just say roughly thirty-five, fifty, or forty, or whatever we want it to be. Are we reducing it by these three-point-fours that we, or whatever it was that we set aside in twenty-twenty, I think it was about that much? Um, so are we reducing it by six when we're putting it in front of the taxpayers, or how are we allocating that?
It's, it's a very good question, uh, if I may, Mr. Mayor. Um, Madam Vice Mayor, the, the idea is that we're starting off with a corpus amount of money that would allow us to design the facility with the help of the community to program it, as well as be able to buy the land that the project would be located on. So that indeed, the ballot question would not include those costs, but, but costs relegated only to construction. So, so I'm hopeful that the number that we have on the ballot, whether it be forty, whether it be thirty, or even ten, I'm just kidding, I wanna see the chief kinda lose more hair out there. Um, whatever the, whatever the value of that question is, I'm hopeful that it won't include design or land acquisition if, if needed.
Okay, perfect, so the six is more about like pre-planning-type stuff, and then the actual ballot measures for the actual construction.
Construction only, that's right.
Councilman Bates.
So, last year, in a capital project, it mentioned four speed trailers, and we purchased two, and it was set for this year, two more. We have it as, um, unfunded projects, not recommended, speed trailer's the additional two. I guess I'm kinda confused, I thought we went ahead and said yes to all four, but this year we would've got two, but it's not, and here it's saying it's not basically recommended or not funded. Can you help me understand that?
Do you mind if I have the chief kinda entertain that?
Mayor, Councilman, great question, thank you for, for bringing that up. You know, there, there are several projects that, that are not recommended, uh, and, you know, these are, this does not score high on our, our thread of, of, you know, life safety and, and quality of life for our citizens. This is something that we're gonna continue to bring forward, and we'll, we'll address it next year. But we can provide the services that our city needs without these two for the time being. We have two online that we're using, and perhaps you see them out, out on the streets, but, uh, you know, they're, you know, there, there's still something that we want, but, uh, given the, given the realities of some of the needs, that rank it higher priority. of the needs, that rank at higher priority, we're willing to wait and hold those up in a way.
So last year when we approved four, we actually only approved two?
What did we end up buying, Chief?
We, we've acquired two. Um, this was the second portion of that. We, we can bring that forward at another time.
Okay.
Councilman Rob.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A question about the fleet, Chief. When we went Carrefour Officer, which I think was about six or seven years ago, what do you think about that? When we, when we went with Carrefour Officer?
About six, six years, seven years ago.
Two and a half years ago.
I mean, part of the argument was that these vehicles would last a lot longer because they weren't in use twenty-four-seven. People would take better care of them because they're essentially viewed as their vehicle now.
That was blood-stained.
And, and the response time, of course. But, um, but, but it was sort of a, we weren't really sure, how long would they last under these conditions? And I think I'm hearing they're lasting longer, which is a good thing. Have you changed the replacement schedule in terms of this is how long we now expect them to last, uh, based on data that you've achieved over the last seven years, or that we've achieved?
Mayor, Councilman, these are great, these are great questions. We are seeing outstanding results from the Take Home program. Um, and so the vast majority of those vehicles purchased in, in their two thousand and thirteen models, the vast majority of them are still out there. They're still providing good service to the officers. They're still safe. And then, and we've been able to keep those mileage, those miles down on them. So those vehicles are lasting well due to that fact. So when I first got here, those of you that were on, Council then, may have remembered that, that I started trying to exchange some of those out, cause I was trying to avoid this big massive, you know, fifty vehicles all in one year would be something that would, that would break us. And so I started a program just that one time of, hey, we're going to trade some of these in to get us off this big tidal wave coming. Uh, since then, we're having such luck with these vehicles, and the care and maintenance of them is going so well that I, I am judiciously extending the miles that we're willing to, to drive them, uh, because of the, the garage is doing a great job of keeping them safe. The, the vehicles are being maintained, and, and that program is returning dividends. So we're able to get those vehicles and use them longer. When I commissioned research on the trade-in value of the vehicles, the trading value was, was so negligible by the time I added in the cost of taking our equipment out, reinstalling it in, it, it was not cost-efficient. So we, we have switched, because of the, the productive nature of this program, we have switched to keep them longer, retaining those funds, and minimizing the amount of that equipment, equipment coming in and out of the vehicles at great savings to our citizens.
Councilman Gil.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, and I absolutely believe in the, the, the Take Home idea or whatever. But I'm wondering if it wouldn't be a good idea, if it wouldn't be too hard to do, to develop something showing, okay, this is the cost, in essence, the cost per mile, per vehicle, uh, versus that. And, and frankly, the reason that I'm thinking about that is that some council in the future might sit there and say, well, we need to move away from this program for any of the variety of reasons. And I'd like to see the, the police department armed with the figures that, wait a minute, it costs twenty cents a mile if you do it this way. It costs ten cents a mile if you do it that way, something. So if that wouldn't be too hard to try to look into, I, I think that'd be great, a little bit of that.
Mayor, Councilman, great, great recommendation. Uh, so I, I can assure you that we don't have a target mileage. We've eliminated target mileage, and then we've replaced that with direct cooperation with the garage, a direct analysis of each vehicle. And we look at the cost of that vehicle. So if we identify, say, we just had, we, we picked one that got built on Friday afternoon, and it turns out to be a lemon, we're identifying that, the cost of maintenance and, and the, the overall cost of that vehicle, we track that. And that is the trigger by which we identify which vehicles need replaced. So it's not a mileage, it's not a year, it's not an officer's wishes.
I appreciate that, but, uh, I would think that you could sit there and look at, okay, you know, here's, we were driving, you know, four hundred thousand miles a year, and, you know, and it costs us this much versus that much, you know, with that. Uh, you know, some data like that. And if it's too hard to come up with that.
You know, I, I will certainly try to, to do some historical research.
If it's doable or something.
We, we've been doing it for, for six and a half years now. And so getting that data from irrelevant data. Uh, but what you are noticing is if, if you look at our historical fuel purchases, that is, those are declining, and they continue to decline. That's great. That means our, our vehicles are more efficient. There's a lot of moving targets on this that all, when it's all said and done, we're saving the, the taxpayers' money.
I know. And I am, like I say, I am an absolute believer in that program. But I want to see that there's a foundation laid there, so that, uh, in the future, if somebody comes along and says, oh, here's a way we could save money, you know, by not having these cars being taken home and just sitting there all day and all night while they're not being used, uh, you know, to defend against that kind of an attack is what I'm, is what I'm.
It could work on that, certainly.
Yeah. Cause perhaps not always will every council be as brilliant as we are.
No other questions?
Chief, thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, just some parting thoughts, if you will. Uh, again, kind of directing council's attention to page two twenty-two, and, uh, continuing, of course, on page two twenty-three. You see a list of projects that are not recommended. Although two twenty-three says recommended, that is not the case. It is meant to be not recommended at this point in time. There are a couple of other bubble projects I think you ought to be aware of. Um, one of which is right at the top of the list, associated with municipal court. The Tyler Technologies, um, uh, software for municipal court is priced at this point in time at right at two hundred and seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we have recently been notified that the current software in place at the court that helps manage dockets and payments and all that kind of thing is, uh, uh, not being supported any longer. And so that the, the, you know, the imminence of that possibility certainly brings this, uh, project closer to needing to happen than we initially thought. And so there may be a need to, to bring that project forward. Uh, IT is in the process of evaluating those realities a little more closely, and, um, and seeing what cut-over costs might be to the upgraded version of the current software and so forth. Uh, but nonetheless, you may see that, uh, here in our near future. Uh, beyond that, um, I would say, you know, depending on situations and circumstances that might change over the next year, you may see some of these other projects needing to be, uh, have more attention than we, we currently envision right now. But anyways, that is our, our capital presentation. And, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of council, we'd be open to any other questions or, or homework requests or whatever that you might have in mind.
I do have one, uh, back again on page two twenty, two twenty-two. Uh, Dragon Speak
for seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. I assume that's a speech-to-text conversion? And are we finding that the, the equipment we have essentially has that built into it? A lot of them do, like our phones do, or some of our computers do. So is that one of the reasons we're not going to do that?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh, have the chief address that one more closely, if you don't mind.
Mayor, Councilman, great question. The Dragon Speak is intended primarily for the transcription of suspect interviews and witness interviews. So my detectives are spending a lot of time trying to get through the nuts and bolts when it comes time to preparing for trial. Um, so it's, it's designed, that Dragon Speak was designed to free up detectives from transcription services into investigating, you know, being able to investigate. So it's not necessarily designed for the patrolman on the streets. Um, so our phones and the ability to record and transcribe off of our phones, that exists. This is, this is taking our audio recordings of witness and suspect interviews, plugging them into this thing and getting a, a transcription of that.
Well, I just brought that up, cause that's, a lot of doctors use that. It's pretty much SOPs that have them write all this stuff out. So, do you use it?
Can't live without it.
Well, I'm, I'm just thinking, I, I, that's not a very big dollar figure. And, uh, that saves a lot of time for guys to have to write reports instead of being on the street. So, my question would be to include it.
Mine is just a comment. I want to salute you folks, cause when I look through these not-recommended projects, this was tough work to say, no, we're not going to do these things. Because the, the rationale behind these, uh, I mean, these are, I, I won't call them needs, but, uh, it, it, it was difficult, I'm sure, to say, no, we're not going to do these things, because they're, they all have value. And some of them, uh, the situation is just going to continue to worsen if we don't address it. And, uh, and so I want to salute you folks. I'm, I, I particularly want to salute you guys for, um, preserving the opportunity fund. Um, because we did agree to use a million dollars of that for the good steam parking lot. And that, that, I think that was a reasonable request. But, um, the opportunity fund was looked to as a funding source for many of these that were not recommended. And it would've been all too easy to deplete that fund and get a lot of these things done. But once that money's gone, it's gone. And so I, I appreciate the effort that was made to preserve that, preserve those dollars, because, uh, back when we put that money aside in two thousand and fourteen, the primary concern we had was the Hops plant and the possibility that we would have a major, um, upgrade required for selenium reduction or for organic reduction. Selenium appears to be, hopefully, under control, but we still have the organics, and that's, that's going to be a big-ticket item. And that was the intent of holding on to that opportunity fund money in case that came, which we thought was inevitable. So, again, kudos for preserving that money, because that's really what we intended for it to be used for.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, I, I appreciate that comment. Uh, Councilman, thank you. It, it, uh, this list is, is a really good indication, I think, of what you can expect to see here in the near future. And indeed, the rationale with regard to not including these kinds of projects right now is with regard to the fact that the savings accounts that we have that are used to fund the other projects on a, a previous list here in your book are really accounts that really aren't being replenished. And so we are trying to make those limited dollars go as far and as long as absolutely possible. Um, and, and the fact is, all these projects are probably very important and, uh, would consume that money, uh, very, very rapidly. So, uh, you know, invariably, we're going to see those savings accounts go away, if you will. But I hope it's on the, on the basis of projects that we just simply can't do without as we, as time progresses, you know. So thank you again.
All right. Any other comments or questions?
All right. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate the, the discussion.
Okay, we'll move on to community promotions funding.
Ladies and gentlemen, I, believe it or not, we are also at the time of year where community promotions needs to be discussed and considered. Um, you have seen undoubtedly the amount of projects and requests that have come forward tonight. Our mission is simply to get this data in front of you, entertain some, you know, questions that you might have on the outtake here, and kick off your formal deliberation process as it relates to being able to direct us with a number that, again, we will plug into the general fund budget and, uh, and, uh, you know, design the budget around. Uh, I, I've asked Flor to, to walk you through some of the detail that the chart here captures. But at the end of the day, we, we do need a number that you're comfortable with. And if you would consider, again, possibly, the request that, uh, you rejected the last time around, of potentially using one cent dollars to, to fund this program, I would humbly ask for your, um, thoughts on that matter, and, uh, and not only delegate general fund dollars to the provision of this, uh, program, if you will. So without further ado, if I could turn the table over a little bit. Thank you.
Your Honor, members of council, um, as you all saw, we received twenty-one applications this round for community promotions. Um, that came to about a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, with requests a little bit over that. Um, twenty-seven of that is cash for seven thousand, fifty-two almost is in-kind, and about thirty-four thousand is for facilities. So at this time, we have this spreadsheet, and I will be emailing this to all of you. If you just got a copy in your, um, packet, just a PDF of it, but let me know you that Excel. What we're asking for you to do is to fill out how much you would like to give of the cash. You can put in a number. And then for these two items, select yes or no, if you would like to. Um, last year, council asked us to put the amount at fifty percent of the items. So this is what the city will actually pay. This eighty-four fifty is how much, sorry, the city's portion is. Same for the facilities. And then the organization would have to pay the other half of that. Um, the spreadsheet is set up to total it all for you, for each item, and then it'll total it at the bottom. And then if you provide us a number, we can set that. So it'll tell you if you've gone over that number, or if you're within the amount. You all decide tonight. Um, and without, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to take those now.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, the, the reality is, you can make decisions as to how to fund these, or not fund these, or partially fund these, in, in whatever capacity that you like. Um, the program has taken a number of variations over the years. Certainly, I think, in recent years, there's been a lot of pressure as it relates to funding parades. And, uh, Mr. Attorney Henley gave you some really good guidance and legal discussion about the role parades have in communities and so forth. So, uh, you know, I'd, I'd invite you to certainly be budget-conscious as you go through this, but also understand that, um, you know, the realities of what you're facing in terms of trying to bring members of other communities into our community to spend very needed tax dollars is, is, is paramount. And the impetus behind this program, uh, but, but, you know, we recognize that there may be other circumstances nowadays that, uh, would warrant additional consideration. And I do think parades are among them. Uh, we, we've recently, um, taken your direction to help fund the Parade of Champions. And while it would be hard to debate that that would be some sort of political statement that parades can often have, like the Pride Parade certainly could, um, we, we recognize that, uh, that you may have some, some pressures to consider some of these requests in, in a different light. And so I, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, that while this isn't an easy conversation, there's a lot of discussion that can be had to walk us through some of this, this, uh, program. Uh, we do anticipate coming back to council when, Flor?
The twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth. And, uh, and I would expect that if indeed you're not ready, or you just need more time to deliberate some of these issues, the twenty-fourth doesn't have to be the last time we talk about it, but it'd certainly help us in advance of the budget to know what these numbers are that we need to work around.
So two questions for our, so we'll, we'll get the sheets then this week to fill in?
Your Honor, it'll come tonight.
Okay. And then what was our amount last year? We had a set amount, correct?
Your Honor, it was twenty-five thousand last year is what we said.
Are we staying at that this year?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, um, Flor, was it twenty-five thousand cash or in-kind or both?
It was total. It was twenty-five thousand last year, because that's what we had within our budget. Um, this year, I think you can set your number.
One, one of the comments last year, Mr. Mayor, was that, um, uh, council needed a little more flexibility to, um, deliberate this against the, uh, the realities of being what, you know, wanting to fund a number of the projects. And some mentioned that twenty-five thousand was restrictive and perhaps, uh, preventative of investing in some of the programs that really needed to be invested in. And so we, we are looking for your direction, honestly, with respect to what that number ought to be. And so, we are looking for your direction, honestly, with respect to what that number ought to be. Certainly, it would be great if we could keep that budget flat, but I recognize that that might not be realistic. And, you know, I, it's been a little more challenging for us this year to place a number on this program.
I wouldn't mind making a suggestion that we leave it at 25, but then if it looks like we need to go higher, then we can talk about that as time comes. I just think that if we raised the number and, you know, say you raised it 35, but we don't necessarily need that much. I just don't want us to be in a position where we're just finding places to put the money to use it, if that makes sense.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, Flor, remind me, how much is the facilities total again?
So, the full total, not the 50%, is about 34. So, of course, if we did half of that, that would be ours.
Because the spreadsheet doesn't allow us to do partial of the facilities.
Correct.
Which could become problematic if we...
Your Honor, last year what we did was, we just had it like this. And then, so that you guys could get down to your 25, we took that out and we filled in numbers. So, some of them only got a certain amount. The reason in the past we haven't done it is because it's hard for staff, when we send it out to all of our facilities, to make sure they're not giving too much or that they're going to pay the other part. So, it was just easier to say, you pay 50, we pay 50. But we've made it work last year. So, you have the opportunity to do that when you fill it out.
Oh, question, correct me if I'm wrong, but last year, if I remember correctly, we set a cap. And some of the members of council respected that cap and some did not. And then, those who did not, their numbers were just averaged in along with everything else. Am I remembering that correctly?
Your Honor, I think that was for the one cent. It could be for this, but I remember it specifically for the one cent when other council members were still on council.
Okay. Maybe you're right. Maybe I'm getting those two things.
Well, you are partially right. If I remember, we didn't, there was some of us that did not understand that, or I guess not understands is the right word, but that they paid 50% of it. Then we'll, then council pay 50. We put in the amount and we averaged it as that amount. So, then you guys went back, reformulated it to where it only showed half of it. So, that's where it got skewed at that time also.
And this year, we did change it. So, you'll see exactly what we would be responsible for.
Mr. Mayor, please.
When I was just looking through it, just, maybe it's not in there. Central Island Corvette Roundup has zero in every column?
Yep.
On the spreadsheet?
Yeah.
Yep.
I'm assuming they've asked for something, but just before you send it to us, will you check on that one?
Yes, they did.
I'm sure they asked for something.
They asked for a thousand. The club is a thousand, it's high level. It's just not showing up from them. But I will make sure it's in there.
Thank you.
Just so we're clear, I understood you to say that we spent, we budgeted 25K including in-kind last year?
Including, correct.
Okay.
So, Councilman, you?
Oh, excuse me. I just get all choked up about them. One of the things, you know, and like last year, just in the process of how we went through doing this, I had kind of thought that we would maybe have a little bit more discussion after some of these numbers were proposed. And then it was just like, well, no, we'll just do this averaging business. So, I wasn't totally happy with the way that that averaging came out because there were some things that I would kind of like to have talked about a little bit more than I felt that we did last year. But that's just as an aside. Maybe I'm the slowest person that there is. But, for instance, and not to pick on the Casper Soccer people, but for example, if we look at their, they're asking for $584.50 on item four. It's a total request. And then, you know, how do those other numbers break out? I understand that you got $500 over here and 84.50 there and that totals to 584. But could you run through that as an example there, Flor? If you think that there's a better one on there that would be an example of how to make track through all those figures and things?
Your Honor, I guess I've not really understood the question. Are you asking what makes up this $84?
Well, no. How, how the, you know, they have a total, so their total request for that item, for the Casper Fall Classic, is 584.50. And then it says in-kind requested at 50%. So, are they actually asking for like a $170 approximately, but we're only, you know, we're granting them 50%? Or is 84.50 the actual amount that they're requesting?
Sure. So...
Or the, you know, what would be the total item there? That's what's gotten, that's part of what's gotten me confused.
Sure, Your Honor. So, basically, for each of these, it is the double amount. They don't actually request the amount. What they do is they tell me what they want and then I go through and calculate it using our price sheet. So, staff sends me all the prices for all of this stuff. So, for this, this is $500 for the soccer complex. Now, it's two days.
Yeah, that one I can understand that.
So, this is trash services. And so, the total of the trash services is $171, or $170 some dollars. And so, half of it, which is what we would pay, is what's reflected here. Now, it's very, it breaks out in different types of trash.
Yeah, even though I didn't ask my question very well, you answered it. So, yeah, thank you.
Councilman, please.
So, the total amount of requests, almost $113,000. Do you remember what the total request was last year? And the reason why I ask that is because if they only asked total amount of requests was only, say, $85,000, this year, we're up to $113,000. Maybe we do need to pick that from 25 to maybe 30,000 because we have more people asking, there's more things going on that will bring in tourists and people. And so, that's why I'm asking that question, is we may have to adjust it up a little bit to compensate.
I don't know. Can you answer it?
Your Honor, I, when I was changing all of this from last year, I believe, I'm 95% sure it was more. I can't give you the exact number, but I think it was closer to $200,000, but I can double check that. But the total request, yes, it was more, yes.
Councilman Bates, I guess that's why I'm saying that I'd rather leave it flat and then we can discuss it. If we think it needs to be added, we can. But to raise the bar, I think we just put ourselves in a position that we feel like we have to spend the money and I don't want us to do that. Flor, I do have a question though. And I guess for maybe for future efforts, and just looking up there now, I mean, Casper Amateur Hockey, you know, they're asking across the board, but it looks to me like the larger amount that they're asking is for the entire season. But then, and I'm not saying that it's using the system differently, but you look at Casper Soccer Club, they've broken it out into three, three different line items for three different events. But to me, that would be the same as Casper, I mean, Casper Amateur Hockey can walk in here and say, okay, well, I'm going to, I'm going to put in 20 requests for all these different events. Is there a way that maybe we can look at for future on this? That if you're, yeah, if you are a club coming in, you're asking for something, you're at, it's a one-time ask. It's not breaking it down into multiple events so that if we say no to this, you might say yes to that. Unless somebody sees it differently, but I just think that, you know, it's, it kind of looks like we're playing the system here. So, I'd rather it be one request per...
Your Honor, we didn't give them that direction. Previously, a long time ago, they got the direction to do it separately so that you could pick and choose. Because maybe you wanted the state cup because that brings more people in and then some of the other ones. And so, they were told to put it in like that. So, we can, I mean, change it however you want. We can break out amateur hockey. We can put them all together and have them combine it all into one. Whatever your direction is, we'll make sure they do that.
I guess I just kind of look at it that if you lump it all together, if you want to apply it towards one thing, go ahead. But just ask for an overall amount and then whatever you're given, you spend that the way that you see fit for that organization. Unless you guys think I'm off base on that, but it just seems odd that we have three lines for one person that, you know, that we're asking.
Any other questions or discussion on them?
Well, are they the only ones asking for separate events?
Special invictus program as well. So is neutron money fair?
In debate.
In debate.
So, it's a lineup by event then?
For everyone else.
Well, not all of them, Sean. There's some that, like Casper Amateur Hockey is a very good example. I mean, they're asking for a total request $25,000. And I'm sure that that's for their entirety, well, it says right there, season events.
Yeah, I have it, I do. Okay.
So, I guess for the future, you can't change it, obviously, now. This is, the requests have been put in. And we'll have to answer to those requests. I'm just saying for the future, that's a discussion we should probably have as to how, you know, if we're good with the way they're putting them in now or if it should just be one line item per, per user group, I guess.
Councilman... Mr. Mayor, I guess going back to what I said earlier, I mean, with some of these very large amounts, I mean, if we were to approve the facilities request for the hockey club and the in-kind request for the fair, we're over our amount right there. And it's a yes or no. I can't, I can't, you know, agree to pay $5,000 towards the in-kind request of the fair. I have to say yes or no. And same thing with the facilities request for the hockey club. And so, if you want to stay within 25,000, you almost have to say no to one of those, if not both, if you want to do anything for the others. And so, I don't know. I mean, I struggle with this every time we've done it and I know we all have. But it just seems like we almost have to have a way to give partial funding for some of these things if we're, if we're going to stay within that limit or simply say no, you don't get anything.
But Flor, didn't you say that last year, we did manually go in there and adjust the numbers for facility requests or in-kind? So, right now, we're saying 50%. You're responsible for 50. We'll give you 50. But if it comes down to it, we can adjust those numbers to where it's less than 50 if we want to give somebody or each group something. Councilman, please.
Well, did I misunderstand this? And for instance, like on item number 13, not to pick on the Toronto County Fair, but where it says total request 5,000, cash requested 5,000, the next column is how much? I had thought that we could go in and say, okay, we want to give them 1,000 or 2,500 or however much and put it into that how much category. Did I misunderstand that?
Or did that, which one was it?
Yeah, like, like line 13. There was 5,000 down one, down one, there.
Oh, okay.
So, then there's cash requested 5,000. The next column is how much?
Yeah. So, this for the cash, you do select how much. They're talking about the in-kind in facilities where you would select yes or no. I can open it up and you can just put in a number as well. If that's council's direction, we can do that.
I don't know how much trouble that would be, but again, I just hate to be in a position of just saying, you get the full amount or nothing.
Well, Flor, if you did open that up to amounts, would it still tabulate the total at the bottom?
Yeah, yeah, I'll change it.
Okay.
That's just me. I don't know about the rest of you. I just hate to be in that position of just saying zero or everything. So, I guess I'd like to have that option for both facilities and for in-kind.
Yep. Perfect. I think with the over 100 green and requests and only 25, I mean, probably 25 allocated, that has to be that way because, like you said, there's two major ones that we're either going to have to basically say no or allocate partial in order to give anyone else funds.
Or in this spreadsheet, give all of it?
Yep. The other thing I'd ask is, I do agree that going forward, I think it should be consistent just as far as we just need to make a call one way or the other. It's either all aggregated or it's all broken out. Don't care which. It just, I think it should be consistent.
For future.
Mr. Mayor, I think, I think it is easy to open that up and allow you to manually enter, if you will, those values. That's easy to do.
I would prefer that.
Mr. Mayor, Flor, do you mind in the email that you send out, clarify the total from last year in the form of requests so that council's aware of how it's looking from year to year?
Good. So, are we going to stick with 25,000 then as our cap?
Yeah, I think we should stick with 25, but if it goes over, I mean, we have a discussion, obviously, if we, if it goes over. But I prefer that we try and stick to that 25 if we can. Myself. What do you guys say?
Is it set up to just basically not work if you go over?
So, Your Honor, no. It just set up so that at the very bottom, where the total is right here, it will change it. So, if you have it like 24.99, it will be green. And if you go over and it's $25,001, it'll turn red. That's it.
Yeah, because we had a balance at last, or at least that was the goal, was the balance.
It just shows you that it's over. It doesn't stop you from doing it. Before, these stopped you from saying yes or no, but we'll change that. And this will just be a number. So, what I'll do is I'll just completely open it up. So, if you want to give the full amount, you'll just have to write the full amount. You can't write yes or no. Otherwise, it will not tabulate.
Okay.
Good.
One more question. So, you said you wanted to do it lumped or separate? Do you all have a preference right now that we can, we can just make sure we do that?
We could certainly consolidate those that are not consolidated and bring you sort of a cumulative number. That helps.
That's easy to do.
Sure enough.
Yeah, we could do that.
Thank you.
And then next year for the applications, we'll make sure that they understand that we need a cumulative number, not a broken out number for each individual.
I can see somebody saying, okay, I've got 12 monthly meetings and this is for January.
Right, yeah, that's right.
Should we do a cumulative this year or just the way it is?
What I understood, council's interest was, was to consolidate the numbers of those who have been broken out. But in the application for next year, let all those groups know that indeed we're more interested in a consolidated number than a, you know, laundry list of...
Per organization.
Right.
If I could just add to that, because, I mean, if we had an application process and then that's how they apply this year, I just, I always hate changing the rules in the middle of the game. So, I mean, if that's the way it was, I'd rather we don't accumulate this year. We just do it based on what we have. And then, moving forward, if we're going to change that and be accumulative, then we should let everybody know that in the next application process. But if they felt that they truly could apply by breaking it out, then I don't think we should change it because that would, that would not be right in my mind. So, I think that we just move forward this year, but from here on out, accumulate. Councilman, please.
So, do we need to make that decision now then so we know exactly what we want next year? And as what it seems is, you put that out there and it's, yeah, but do we need to make it official?
Well, I think so, but I don't think we have to do that right now. I mean, before we get, before we put it out next year, I think that we need to make that decision. But I'd like everybody to have their, everybody to have their input on it. So, I'm just saying this year, I just don't think we should just change it just because it was brought up tonight, that we should change it. It is what it is this year and let's make a decision before we put it out next year.
I just thought since we already found out, we can just leave it on there and...
Yeah, but we've got a couple people that aren't here either and I'd like to get their input in on them, so.
No problem.
Okay. Okay. So, we'll move on to unsafe structure and equipment ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. As we have talked in the past, we have an approach with respect to dealing with unsafe living conditions that is dramatically different than the last time we came to, probably two years ago now. We are concerned about the bevy of complaints that we get very typically throughout a given year from primarily vulnerable residents who are concerned about the living conditions that they are obliged to live in based on non-response from private landowners and property owners and those who have obligations to maintain their living conditions by providing rental housing and so forth, if you will. A lot of the typical conditions that we deal with are more along the lines of lack of appropriate heating type appliances, sanitary conditions generally, structural conditions that could include appropriate doors, appropriate walling and appropriate flooring and so on. Some situations that we face also include conditions that not only are deplorable for people to live in on their own, but the impacts that those kinds of conditions have on their neighbors. Uh, and so the gamut of complaints that we get, a lot of which we capture in your packets in the form of pictures, in the form of letters, in the form of statements from like the Department of Health who's represented here tonight, probation and parole, um, meals on wheels, are, are, uh, very discouraging because currently, we don't believe that we have the tools necessary to be able to respond as appropriately as we would like. Which means that we would like some means of being able to correct some of the basic life conditions that many people are dealing with or are forced to deal with. This example here that you see on the screen, and, and you've probably seen these pictures. I just wanted to bring up a couple of them that are more striking and and probably representative of some of the more common things that we deal with. Uh, we hope that the ordinance in front of you will help us better navigate in terms of our response. Whether it be complaints that we receive directly, whether it be through complaints that our partner agencies receive as well. We believe that the ordinance that you have in front of you will help us deal with this, not necessarily from a, an anti-hording type approach, but more of a sanitary condition approach and/or an ability to safely exit the building because of the significant amount of clutter that would otherwise block passage to appropriate egress. Um, if you look at the other picture that we have here, we are dealing with, um, a blatant sanitary condition here. Believe it or not, that's actually human feces that are on the wall there. I would have no indication as to how that occurred. Um, and maybe folks in this room do. Uh, but, but when we can't respond to situations like this because of inadequacies in our own ordinance and based upon complaints for help, if you will, I feel like we're not doing the job as good as we should be. With respect to the other picture that we have here, uh, this is rather repulsive as well, but it's probably a function of inadequate drainage facilities and what can happen when those aren't dealt with appropriately. I can't tell you if that's black mold or if that's just, um, interiorating appliances underneath the cabinet there, who the heck knows? But what I do know is that if we were to get a complaint of this nature, we really don't have the tools necessary to be able to mitigate a condition like this. Black mold is actually a pretty typical question and complaint that we have with many of our properties here. And again, it comes in directly to us or through our neighboring agencies, our partner agencies. With this next picture, um, this is a, a, well, I'm gonna confess that I don't exactly know what contributed to this infestation of ants. But as you might imagine, in a multi-family dwelling, uh, where this can be found, there is more than one family that's gonna be impacted by this, more than one elderly person that is gonna be impacted by something like this. Uh, and clearly, we would propose language that would allow us to compel the property owner to deal with this. And typically, the property owner in question here isn't, um, the person that's living there. It's the person who is renting here. In the next picture, you see something kind of similar. This is a strip of flies that have been collected, uh, you know, in an apartment that obviously has some sanitary condition issues, maybe even ventilation issues. Uh, but in any case, without the right tool in effect, it's hard for us to be able to compel some type of change. And the next picture here, uh, this one is interesting to me because, um, believe it or not, we get a lot of complaints about sewage that is not appropriately being relayed out of the building. This is a picture of a, of a sewage facility that is not appropriately capped or or serviced into the sewer system to get it out of the building. We, we have dealt with a number of properties who retain their sewage in buckets within the building, who have standing sewage in their basements or crawl space. And until those rivulets of sewage actually come out of the building and into the right-of-way, we don't have the capacity to deal with these, these conditions with the house that may be, for some reason, containing that sewage on their property within their building. Another example, although I don't have a picture of it here, of complaints that we get, uh, and in fact, is captured in one of the letters that I was reading through here recently. Talks about a neighbor who could see mice in the adjoining, not adjoining, but the adjacent neighbor. And those mice are, you know, frolicking in the window and, um, enjoying the sunlight and all that kind of thing, and freaking the neighbor out because they, of course, are worried about that infestation impacting their own property. Again, without that infestation actually taking place on that adjoining property or adjacent property, we are limited in what we can do to deal with those kinds of infestations. Um, in this particular picture that you have in front of you, we have a heating facility in the form of a propane tank being attached to a blower on top of carpet that, that provides us some concern, not only from a fire hazard standpoint, but from a ventilation standpoint and an asphyxiation hazard. Uh, again, without the appropriate tools in place by ordinance, we are limited in how we deal with that even. Uh, the next picture deals with that concept of inappropriate walling and flooring, uh, and inappropriate doors and windows. Um, again, people do live in these conditions and some people will tell you they, they don't have any other options except for conditions of this nature. I think a property owner who is renting to a person that has this situation has an obligation to, uh, to provide a, an environment that is better than this. And, um, without the right tools, we can't compel a property owner to do something about this. I think we have one more picture, or is this the last one? That is the last, okay. I want to emphasize that the ordinance we are proposing to you, even in its condensed, simplified, reduced form, does allow us the opportunity to deal with conditions of this nature that do exist here in Casper. Um, and in fact, exist in a lot more volume and numbers that, um, that, you know, the few pictures that I showed you here tonight don't quite capture. If I could direct your attention to the ordinance itself, I'd like to tell you about some of those pieces of language that we think are just really, really helpful in our effort to try to correct some of these kinds of things. Um, for example, in the draft ordinance, if you look on the first page, under ventilation, which is section C, under conditions, we are suggesting-
We all have written copies of that, I think.
Should be in your packets, if anything.
And my thing shuts off at about page two hundred.
Oh, does it? Okay.
Do we have a, I think I can get it up for you.
Do you have, okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I got it, thank you.
In the first page of the ordinance, at the very, very bottom, again, section C, we are suggesting in the ordinance that every habitable space, which is like a living room or a bedroom, not even necessarily a, a bathroom, should have one operable window so that indeed, natural ventilation can take place, or, um, appropriate mechanical means to exchange air. If you look at, uh, section E, where it talks about heating facilities, we are suggesting in the section relating to that, that indeed, cooking appliances are not appropriate substitutes for heating kinds of furnaces or electric heat or whatever. But that also recognizing that sometimes property owners or, or tenants are in between getting a furnace fixed or whatever, that indeed substituting space heaters for temporary use is, is appropriate in order to get the more appropriate heating kinds of appliances fixed or repaired or otherwise operable. But an oven with a gas burner that's turned on in a kitchen to heat the whole house, we are suggesting is a minimum standard that shouldn't be allowed, if you will. If you look at section H, um, we talk about sanitary drainage and what is appropriate. We are suggesting that sanitary waste should not be collected, stored or disposed of on any property other than through an approved sanitary sewer system, which could be septic or public, depending on what, of course, is, is approved and certified. But not buckets and not crawl spaces and so on. And certainly not the situation where that type of storage, you know, is allowed to contaminate the public right-of-way or whatever that, that is the current standard or bar that we have to see happen before we can get. If you look on the third page of the ordinance, which is kind of the, um, the last section, if you will, that is entitled, "Structures Unfit for Human Occupancy", we do deal with the idea of what an unsanitary condition is. We suggest that an unsanitary condition that should be dealt with is a condition that has vermin or rat infestations, filth or contamination, a place that doesn't have ventilation, a place that doesn't have heating facilities, and certainly, a place that would be in such disrepair that the building appears as though it is structurally unsound. One of the things that I was really curious about as it relates to not only getting real simple, uh, language that would clarify what we think the standards ought to be for a safe living condition, but also the ability to be able to respond to some of these conditions, I was, I was, um, really curious as to what our responding entities in our organization viewed as being the problem right now as it relates to the current ordinance. And so I asked fire, I asked our chief building official and so on, what it is that would allow us to be able to deal with these kinds of conditions. Fire indicated to me that unless they're there responding on some sort of fire event or a, or a major malfunction of some kind with respect to the structure, they really didn't have access to the facility in order to deal with some of the things that they may have heard about that are legitimate fire hazards. And I would certainly invite you to talk to our, our folks here tonight who are representing the department. Uh, the health department has indicated to us a number of times that, again, until these conditions, um, impact another property or the right-of-way or whatever, neither our building department or the, the health department can, can become involved. And so I'd invite you to to quiz our folks here tonight as to what that really means and how that's, uh, an issue for them. I, I was also really interested in some of the calls that I've received, actually a recent call that I received from probation and parole, where they talked about the lack of places that they have to place some of their clients, some of our fellow citizens. And many of them reported to, or reported about anyway, um, to the caller that reached out to me, that indeed, these folks who are trying to get, uh, a new lease on life and have met their debt to society and so on, but still have some obligations to report as it relates to probation and parole or whatever, are being placed in properties that, um, are allowed to be rented, but are allowed to be rented without heating appliances at work, uh, without, um, uh, and, and of course, we all know how cold it can get when some of these types of placements occur, uh, without doors that are adequate, and in fact, in some cases are actually cardboard. I was amazed to see what it is that this particular state employee identified to me as being the conditions that they face on a very regular basis when it comes to finding living conditions for folks who are trying to get back onto a more productive path in our society. So my request is this, that, that we take the time to, to discuss the language that we've boiled down to a, a set of kernel kinds of principles that we hope you'll support. But that also, we can put this back out to the public and have the public review this language in the portal that we've gained some success with in terms of gathering community feedback and citizen insight. And, um, and come back together, talk about that language, hear what our citizens have to say. And at the end of the day, I hope that we can get something in place that gives us something to work with that's better than what we have and allows us to improve the conditions that we are facing on a very, very frequent basis throughout a number of agencies in our community. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd love to hear council's feedback and take any questions or testimony that you'd like to entertain.
Councilman Hough.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I would like to thank the group that worked on this. I think, uh, we got pretty well shot down the last time we wanted to do something like this, and perhaps rightly so. But I, I think this is a major, major improvement, and I think this is something we can live with. Uh, the one thing I didn't see, and I didn't go back and look at the original, the whole ordinance, but I don't see the language that says we could put board up the door. I assume that's in the original ordinance. As an unmodified section, I don't, I just don't recall.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if you'd like, we can address that question if that would help.
Yeah.
What, what tools do we have to be able to declare a property unfit and basically condemn it, which I guess is what you're asking?
Get them out.
Can we get any kind of discussion?
Your Honor, Mayor and council, we also have the abatement of dangerous buildings that's already in our ordinance, which is a more stricter version of this where, and it's a lot longer legal process, but when a building is deemed dangerous, we would use that. This is for unsafe conditions, which is, is, uh, dangerous in one respect, but also it is something where, when, if we deemed that the property was in the condition where it goes from unsafe to dangerous, we would use the basement abatement of dangerous buildings to move forward as far as condemning the building.
Okay, so just follow, apparently we don't, you don't think we need language in this modification to literally get them out of there? I mean, those pictures we saw are pretty bad.
If we deemed that it was dangerous, we would use the basement of dangerous buildings to move forward with that. We have that tool in place.
All right. Well, this is a great start.
Well, I guess I want to kind of follow up with Councilman Hough, 'cause that's the same question I had, is we've, we're putting an ordinance in place that says, you can't live like this, you can't, you can't rent out an apartment that doesn't have heat, has electrical problems, unsanitary conditions, but, okay, so you can't do that, but what steps does it allow us to take to remedy what those problems are? How can we stop the landlord from renting that apartment out until that issue's taken care of?
There is a procedure in the building code and the residential code for recording the violations and such, and also in the municipal code. These would be deemed misdemeanor, which are, um, have a fine of seven hundred and fifty dollars a day, and each day is a new occurrence. So it would be, and typically, when you go into an apartment or a building that has a number, one of these conditions, you have a number of these conditions. So each one would be separate, so it would be financially substantial. So each one would be separate, so it would be financially substantial amount for the landlord, or the owner, or the person there to get it corrected. Again, if it is beyond being unsafe to where it is a dangerous condition for somebody, I'd like you also to realize that we also have children that can be involved in these situations, that don't have the ability to leave that environment. So we have that case also. So anyhow, if we deemed it from unsafe to dangerous, we could have them removed. And otherwise, if it's unsafe, it could be a great financial responsibility.
Just one more, kind of still on the same track. Believe me, I'm not trying to beat up on you, I love this thing. Do we have the ability to put a lien on the property owners for unpaid fines, so $2750 a day?
Honored Counsel, in a case like this, I think there are a couple of things, questions here that are going on. We wouldn't have the ability to place a lien pursuant to this particular building. Now, the original code that Mr. Elston was talking about, you do have the ability to place a lien. But under the procedure here, the building officer will have the right to go in and give a notice of violation, set forth what needed to be done, and give a reasonable time period for which it could be done. And if it wasn't done then, then we can move in with some type of law enforcement action, or with some type of an administrating type of action to remedy it. But this particular provision does not permit us to go in, tear down the building, and assert a lien. However, if we were to go for a more serious, dangerous building, then you can actually do some immediate work like that. But it's rare to do that, and it's more difficult, more lengthy.
Thank you.
Well, and I'd like to also compliment everybody that worked on this. But I've got to make a few comments here. And if I irritate some people, I hope I do. Because as I look at this, I wish that all of those people who came and pitched a tizzy fit when we wanted to enact the International Property Maintenance Code, and they ran around, that the world was falling, and that it was horrible things, and that the council was doing things that we didn't have any idea what we were doing, and all that stuff.
It aligned with the United Nations, at 21.
And all of that crap, frankly. And we don't need this. Above all, we don't need this because this is legislative regulatory overreach, and you're trying to take people's property and their property rights, and all that stuff. I would like to have every one of them sit here and look at the conditions that you just described. And mostly, I would like to confront all of those people, and say that, you know, and many of you said that we didn't need this regulation because there were already things that could be done to remedy these conditions. Now we find out, as some of us knew then, that, well, no, there really weren't practical ways of remedying those conditions. And so I'm really all in favor of moving forward with something like this. The one thing that I am concerned about here is that, I worry that this is, might be kind of, and I'm sort of worrying out loud about this, that this might be kind of a piecemeal approach to this. Because instead of having a comprehensive property maintenance code that has everything all in one place, where, yeah, you know, it can be a little bit difficult for people to wade through and figure out where things are and everything, that by, you know, separating some of these out, and addressing them separately in this kind of an ordinance, if we aren't making more of a problem than what we're solving. And that's what my worry is about this. But every single thing that this addresses, I'm all in favor of, and I think that as a community, that we owe this to our citizens. You know, I think every once in a while about, you know, former Councilman Laird, when he would talk about his grandmother assuring him that, well, the city fathers will take care of certain things. And, you know, while we all know and remember Dallas, some affectionately, some not affectionately, but he did have a good way of expressing some of these things. And I think that some of these kind of things are things where the city fathers, which is us, and that's an antiquated expression. But we really do owe the obligation to our citizens to take care of and enact some of these things. But I'm just worried about if this isn't a piecemeal approach to this. That's my only objection to maybe going forward with this. I don't know if that's something that you guys can comment on, or if you think this fits real nicely into all the other regulatory schemes, or not.
Mr. Mayor and Counsel, if you notice, all of these are actually directed towards the interior environment of the residences, where the people live, sleep, eat, bathe, and those things. We were looking at this in steps that may be in the future, looking at other areas of the property as far as what was in the property maintenance code, you know, and looking at those exterior items. In another step is what we were looking at. But these are the, probably, I would have to say certain words, the most detrimental in those things which people actually are most in direct contact with, the vulnerable kinds in their daily lives. And so that is why it's directed towards the interior environment of the buildings in this town.
Well, and I have one other question. I'm also wondering if there shouldn't be an enhanced inspection power put forward in here. And I realize that this is set up in terms of being, in essence, a criminal violation. Because, you know, the final section in here says, it shall be unlawful for any person to violate any of these things. Whereas, like, property maintenance code was set up as a civil thing, and the nice thing about having things set up as a civil thing is that then you can sit there and say, well, okay, you know, there are these inspection powers, and things like that. And in the property maintenance code, everybody always overlooked the fact that the person, you know, that the inspector didn't have the power to just come and bull their way in. If the people said no, they, you know, they had to go then and get a warrant for that. But I'm wondering if there shouldn't be some inspection references in here, too. But I'm not really sure how you'd fit that into a criminal statute. I'd have to think about that a lot. Ask Mr. Henley to figure out a way to do that, because he's a lot smarter than I am. Those are my only thoughts and comments on this. But I really do want to compliment you guys for working on this.
I have a question.
Okay, just one more.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. To add on to Mr. Elston's comment, by the way, who did a large portion of this work in partnership with the Fire Department, and the Police Department, and others. You're probably not wrong in your comments, Councilman, with respect to the piecemeal approach. This indeed was meant to capture the very, very basic elements of things of highest priority and concern to us.
The worst of the worst.
The worst of the worst, that's exactly right. So that we didn't run the risk of distracting the loss of these kinds of issues, and the ability to deal with these kinds of issues with the other kinds of discussions that could take place, and other portions of our approach that we need to look at as well. So I agree with Mr. Elston also that we probably do need to bring forward some other pieces and parts that might, you know, ultimately come to a more comprehensive approach. But, you know, until we're ready to do that, and until we're comfortable with an approach that you all endorse in dealing with these sorts of things, I guess I'd have to ask for your patience with regard to a more piecemeal attack at this, if you will. And so thank you for that comment. I find it hard to disagree with what you're saying there.
I want to defer to Sean. Okay, Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. So just a couple of comments in regards to property maintenance code. I mean, there were some ridiculous portions of it that were the violation, if your neighbor couldn't play your barbecue labors, or you didn't have a certain specific wattage of bulb in your stairwell. But aside from that, I guess my question is, some of those pictures look like that maybe, I mean, we don't have the before picture, so was it a livable environment before the tenant took over, and then they were the cause of the environment being unsafe? And if so, I guess are we holding the landlord criminally liable for something a tenant does unbeknownst to them?
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Johnson, that's a fair question. I certainly do think that in the current layout of the ordinances, of which, I'm not the expert, and I would probably want to refer to the city attorney for some of this. There are ordinances that do protect the landowner for destruction kinds of things that a tenant may do. But what we don't have is the other side of it, where a tenant is not as protected from things that a landowner may be exacting upon that tenant. And so beyond that sort of general view of where I think the ordinances are, John, do you have anything that you would add to that question?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll add to that is that with any type of prosecution, particularly in the criminal realm, you have to prove the case beyond a reasonable doubt. You have to show that it was both mensory, as well as a bad act. So in this case, that would be part of the prosecution's obligation to show that in fact, the landlord was responsible for this. He would have to, or she would have the obligation, would have to plead the right, if they chose to do so, to put on a defense, to state that it was the responsibility of the tenant, that the tenant came in and modified the building and made it in such a poor condition. So again, it's a factual question, and we just don't know the answers to those facts until the factual situation presents itself, and until the proof is gathered, and the case puts on importance.
Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. How did we get these photos? Who took the photos? Do we know? I guess my question is, were they taken by our staff? And if so, how were our staff invited into these facilities? And what legal rights would a property owner have to prevent someone from coming in and taking photos of these conditions?
A variety of ways, is the short answer. But if I could, maybe defer to Fire, because some of these were provided by the CIR team. Dan, as well, if you could follow up after Fire, and the Health Department, if y'all don't mind, providing some testimony as well.
Mayor, Council, a few of the photographs from the Fire Department were the result of us going on a call, going on a fire call, either for a fire or for an emergency medical condition at which we took photos. In one case, there was a landlord. If you remember the photograph that had the propane tank and the heater, it was actually the landlord that called us, saying, in this case, we had a renter that was doing some things that were making the landlord uncomfortable, and the neighboring apartment dwellers uncomfortable, and the fact that this individual was heating his apartment with a propane salamander, and doing some other odd things. And so we were able to then assist the owner of the apartment building in finding a better place for that individual to live. There were some mental illness issues going on, and so we were able to work in concert with various agencies, social service agencies, to create a much better place for that individual to live, and a safer place for the neighboring apartment of folks. So, but generally, those were photos that we took at an incident.
Mr. Mayor and Council, them photos have been edited. We had numerous, numerous photos, but we took a sampling of the different situations. Most of those photos are from other entities, from the Health Department, Mills on Mills, because as a building division, we don't have that authority to go in and take those photos. And so that's, we're hindered there. Code enforcement has numerous photos also, which we added. Because they were on the exterior of the buildings. You can look at the exterior and see, and know that the condition of the interior is just as bad, if not worse. So anyhow, without that ability to go in and take those photos, that was done mainly, I would say, probably, and the Health Department might attest to this, that they went in for another purpose, and then the photos were taken.
Well, just so, maybe I'm a little slow in picking this up, Dan. So if this ordinance went through three readings, and you got some of these photos, what would happen?
This ordinance would make this complaint driven. Right now, for me to go into a building or a structure, I need a building permit that allows me to be on the premises. With this, it would be by complaint. And with that complaint, and the occupant allowing entrance, we are able to go in and check this out. It's complaint-driven versus permit-driven, by being in the city ordinance.
The photos that were supplied from the Health Department primarily were taken during what are termed home assessments, where we're called in from social services or law enforcement, asking us to give an evaluation of the conditions within the home. So we need permission. It's a complaint-driven. As Dan mentioned, we receive a complaint if we're allowed into the home by the occupants, or by the social service, or a lot of personnel that's involved in the investigation.
Just kind of, so, just trying to walk through how this would play out. By the way, I agree with everything that was said. This is long overdue. But, so we deem a property unsafe. We've got somebody that was living there that no longer has a place to live. We have a lot of people that don't have a place to live. What do we do with this person? I mean, we have to be prepared for that because there's a lot of these situations here.
Well, I think the biggest question that I'm seeing coming out of this is that it gives us, it basically makes it unlawful for people to make their living environment unlivable, or landlords to not provide services to people. And, you know, and I think of one, I won't put his name out there, but, you know, there's numerous complaints that came in about one person that would rent places out to individuals, and then after they get locked into it, they go in there, and they don't have hot water. And he wouldn't fix the hot water to it. So the ordinance makes it unlawful for that to happen, but, okay, it's unlawful. Now, what do we do about it? What lawful authority does he, where's the action at? Where does it allow us to do anything about that? We know it's happening, and maybe, you know, they'll allow us inside to show us that the hot water's not running, but at the end of the day, what are we doing? Or what does it allow any of our staff to do to take care of the problem, so to speak? That's what I'm missing here, is, and I don't know, maybe if that's, if I'm explaining it right, Charlie, but I think it's...
Yeah, it's both problems. It's, I think Dan explained that, we could find them. But, and there would be a financial cost. But you still have a person who no longer has a place to live. And so it seems to me we have to have some alliance with the Hasper Housing Authority, or some option, or the Rescue Mission, or someone, so that we have a place to take this person. Because once we deemed it unsafe, we can't go back and say, oh, we didn't mean that. I mean, once we say it's unsafe, somebody can't be there anymore.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Powell, what we do have the ability to do, and the flexibility to do, is to say, hey, you've got clearly an unsanitary condition here. We believe that you can fix this by doing X, Y, and Z. And furthermore, we believe that when you do this, you come back into compliance. And so what is a typical negotiation, if you will, as it relates to other things that we deal with, when we find things being in violation, if you will, is walking through that dialogue of saying, you have X amount of days, or weeks, or whatever. that dialogue of saying, you have X amount of days or weeks or whatever to come into compliance and when you do, all will be good and, and no further steps will be necessary. As it relates to folks who don't want to comply and despite our best attempts to give them the opportunity to come into line with what's appropriate, then we do need to take the steps of citations and misdemeanor fines and so on, on whatever basis the prosecutorial element of our organization suggests should be done in concert with whomever the contact points are, to again, try to bring that compliance. I think that there will be the case, hopefully on a more rare circumstance, an unusual circumstance, where after we've gone through the negotiation process, someone doesn't want to comply, or after we've gone through the citation process and they still don't want to comply, that their, their building simply will not be habitable and a person will have to look elsewhere for accommodations or whatever. But I do believe that with the implementation of this ordinance and the provision of these tools, that we will be able to, to respond to conditions that are inappropriate and exact some change. But it might include citations and more in the hammer on folks.
Do we need to have that in place?
In this language?
In this language to say, if you're, if you're not in compliance, these are the steps that we need to take. I mean, because then it's just kind of open to interpretation of how much time are you going to give them to get in compliance? And then at what point, if they're not in compliance, does a citation come into place? And then after that, at what point does it come into where, you know, the next step? I, I just, to me, there's no steps in place to say how, how you're going to approach the issue.
Mr. Mayor, Council, you know, that's, on the one hand, it's the beauty of it, that you don't have that in place because Mr. Elston may go into one house and find that there's just a small defect and, you know, it's not going to take much, you know, you fix it for the next three days, fine. You may go to another house and may require, you know, some repairing of plumbing, some repairing of electricity. He says, you know, you're going to have to have a longer period of time to do that. You have to do this, this, and this to get it done, give it this amount of time. And so to, to just have a fixed time, I, I think it kind of goes against the intent to try to work with these people to better their property and keep their property up. But on the other hand, you could say, well, then they're just going to use that time to further extract the pound of flesh or whatever from their, their tenants. But, but the, you know, the fact of the matter is the tenant always has at least the option at that point to know that someone is working out for them, trying to make it better and also that they probably have some contact and may be able to help them with the social services, whether it comes through the county health department or through the fire department or through the police department or through the contacts they have with the rest emissions or whatever in the housing authority. So, so there is a, if you remember, that this is being drafted upon the International Residence Code and the, the building code. So therefore, the process is in place. And again, that process commonplace originally, it's an effort by the building inspector to get these people to, to kind of take heed and to do what should be done so that people can stay there, so that those people who own the property can continue to rent or use the property and, and, you know, create a housing shortage for the really low income type of people. There is one.
Your Honor, thank you for the opportunity to, to address this. Council, I, I would submit to you that we already have a, a process in place under the concept of the fix-it ticket. So law enforcement already works under this where they have, the enforcing officer and the judiciary has the opportunity to use discretion at the time, at, at each level, to, to look at the circumstances of the individual, circumstances they're faced with, make decisions on, on doing that. So if we apply the same logic that we do with, you know, the person that's driving down the road with a tail lamp out, you know, as, as we come into contact with them, we can give them a ticket, but we can, but we can also designate that as, as a fix-it ticket. You have X amount of days to fix this and, and, because our goal is always going to be compliance and both the, the judge and our enforcement, both code enforcement and the police department, we are, we are well adept at, at recognizing that, you know, this is somebody that we can gain compliance with through, through that process. So we're already using discretion. We're very accustomed to it, as is the, as is the judge.
Paul, if I may, argue with...
Well, just for a minute, I, I'd like to, I, I agree with what Chief McPeters just said and I'm very comfortable with having that kind of discretion vested in our staff and people and everything, but, you know, what I would kind of like to do is I'd frankly like to put Chief Harshman and Mr. Elson on the spot and say, are you guys satisfied that this proposed ordinance adequately addresses the things that we need to? And I know I'm putting you on the spot, but I want to put you on the spot. Because you're, you know, you have expertise in these things that we don't.
Mayor, Council, Councilman Hugh, I, I believe it does from the aspect that it, it covers the really critical issues for, for fire. Now, there are a lot of other issues, if you were to look at the maintenance code, that that could be brought into it, but, but from our standpoint, it covers egress, which is just critical. Can people get out of a building if they need to? It, it covers sheet rock, if you will, or lath and plaster, that it's intact so that if we have a fire in that corner, the ceiling's intact, so it won't spread to the attic and it won't take, take out other apartments in the building. That's part of the fire department's Section D. It covers smoke detectors, this is critical for early warning to, to get people to the path of egress, get them out of the building. And in, in circumstances where there are fuel burning appliances or attached garages, it covers the aspect of the, the silent killer, carbon monoxide. So from a really core base of fire protection, I think that paragraph covers it. There are certainly other issues that perhaps down the road, as, as a building official has said, that, that we may want to take a look at, but this, I think this is a huge step forward from a fire department aspect.
And I agree with Chief Harshman that this is, this is a step in working in concert with, with the, the dangerous buildings and such, we are able to encompass most of the situations. Later on, it would be nice to look at, at the, the other conditions, but they're not as critical as these are here. So, you know, I was the proponent of the property maintenance code and I'd love to have the whole code, but that did not take place. So, so to take this is, I think, a, a great step forward in providing the safety of citizens.
Counselor McBell.
So if I'm understanding now, if a tenant felt that their living conditions were substandard, they could file a complaint themselves?
Yes, sir.
So what protection would that tenant have from being evicted for making that complaint?
He would have some protections under the Wyoming State statutes, the landlord-tenant statutes, but the flaw with that statutory scheme is that he has to be current on, on his rent before he can complain about anything. And so he, he would, there are some protections under the Wyoming landlord, right, statutes. And I, I know about that stuff.
There's nothing we could put in place to provide any corrective protections, is there? Or did you guys consider that possibly drafting this?
Mr. Mayor, is it okay if we took that question as kind of a homework assignment? And, and maybe flesh that out a little bit?
And, and Mr. Mayor, if I might jump in on that, I think that that gets us onto real dangerous thin ice, because with some of these things, if we're going to proclaim that these things are real life safety issues, but oh, it's okay for you to keep living there. That's, that's a real problem that you get into. And, but I, and I'm real sympathetic, I don't like the idea of putting people out on the street. And I know the reality of how these things work is that we got landlords that'll sit there and say, oh, well, that's okay, you know, we can get out of here, we'll just wait a couple months and then rent it to somebody else, but...
Or how dare you file a complaint on me?
Your rent just went up by three hundred percent.
And that doesn't seem like a unlikely scenario to me.
Did you assume you wanted to?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Manager, and Council. Having done home health for twenty years as an occupational therapist, going into some of these homes that are very unsafe for the residents that live there, also being the director of the Health Department, having members of staff that go into these homes to provide services, our maternal child health goes in there, we also have vulnerable populations with the children, a lot of mental health issues, which that's kind of the elephant that's in the room, really is like being able to make a true difference is the lack of mental health services that we do have providing. But while youth and environmental health get invited in, we are in some of these questionable homes. And so hopefully, by being able to making complaints and getting the information too, we can start to at least address some of the issues that exist. It's, it's so much bigger even than the pictures that we saw on the, the board that I think it's a good starting place, but it's also the people that provide services. I know that I talked extensively with fire and that's what I brought forward to Liz is like fire brought up these situations of how do I get into the home safely and provide services? So it's also the workers that are through the city that go out into these homes and making it safe for them as well. So I just wanted to put that little tidbit out there, so, thank you.
Counselor Bates.
Yeah, just...
I want to say that I agree, I'm going to play devil's advocate here. I mean, the ordinance reading through it, I'd like to read it a little more detailed, but there's nothing that stands out to me as a homeowner that goes, I have no problem with it. But playing devil's advocate, as in the first picture with all the junk laying across by the bed, houses that people are hoarders in that has things clear to the roof and things like that, that that is their home, that is how they're comfortable living, they're okay with it, we may keep our houses nice and neat and clean and dust free and everything else, are we trying to get those people that are okay living that way to meet, to a point our expectation of how we want them to live on that aspect, just with the first picture? The rest of them is like, hmm, that's, that's wrong. But I've known, being a kid, walking into people's home with laundry all over the floor and dishes stacked up and they had to wash a cup just for you to drink and that was just gross in my world, but it was normal and it was just, that's how they lived and most of the time, kids demons spent time there, it was stepparents and they were okay. It was just the parents living there. So I guess I'm just playing the devil's advocate of who are we addressing when we make this? Are we addressing prob, people who are renting? Are we addressing your neighbor that owns that house and has owned it for the last thirty years? And inside, that's how their house looked, outside it's fine, but inside, they have junk everywhere. So I'm just asking that question, I guess.
Just a point of certification, because I feel like you're missing a huge factor of this. This is complaint based. This isn't going to be police just knocking down doors and saying, you have a pile of dirty clothes right here, shut her down. Like, first off, I have two young kids and I have a million things on my plate, my house is messy. I don't feel like this threatens them coming to my house and telling me that my children are living in an unsafe condition because I'm two days behind on laundry and I have, well, I spent some dinner dishes in the sink. I, I don't, I don't, this is complaint based. They're not going to go looking for things. People are going to have to call in.
Right.
So, so for example, a hoarder, so let's pretend we have a hoarder. The hoarder isn't going to call the police and say, I've been hoarding, I'd like you to come check it out.
No. I understand that. If they have a small fire, the fire department shows up...
Correct.
Puts out the fire, but sees twenty buckets of paint all over the house, okay? According to the ordinance, we're going to tell them to clean that up.
But if it's unsafe, sorry, Dan.
So I, that's what I'm saying is, or go into a house and there's laundry piled this high all the way down the hallway and dirty dishes stacked up and they get a small little fire or a kid chokes and EMS shows up and then they're like, this is a really, really unsafe, seems like an unsafe plain house. I just want to make sure that we're, we're not going into, that this isn't going into where their kid's living that way. And I know it's wrong. Well, I feel it's wrong morally, I, that grosses me out, but I'm just wondering, I, I guess is, I'm just playing devil's advocate here for homeowners, people that own their homes that may have an accident, you walk in and their place is a disaster.
Well, I'll, I'll give you my comment on that. This is not a ordinance to, it's not the Dirty House Ordinance. We're not going to look at people's houses and go in there and say you need to clean house. This is for unsafe environments. This is for people that may, could be mental issues or not. They, they decide to live in, in complete filth that is unhealthy for them, it's unhealthy for the neighbors next door, it could cause spread of disease. You talk about a fire, if you had a hoarding situation and you have a small fire breakout, it's more likely going to turn into a huge fire because hoarders are going to have all kinds of combustible materials and burnable materials. If you're living next door to that and that house burns down and it takes off right away and fire doesn't quite get there in time, does that affect you? Very well could. It could burn your house down. So this isn't, the way I look at it, this is not, you have a dirty house and we're creating an ordinance to come over and tell you to call Molly May up and have them come clean the place up. This is an ordinance to protect people that may not know better or are just living in filth that could affect you. Their house burned down could affect you. And it's also an ordinance for people that, that are renting a place and they have a landlord that doesn't care. All he's all about, or she, is about getting the money. And too bad, you signed a lease and I don't care if your hot water doesn't work or not, I don't care if the heat's off or not, I don't care if, you know, your sewer line doesn't put the sewer where it's supposed to go. That's what this is for.
And, and I get that. And I don't know if I'm making it clear that I get it. Looking at these pictures, I get it. Reading the ordinance, I get it. I'm just pointing out the first picture, I've been in homes that look just like that, but I couldn't sit there and say they'd follow under this ordinance, it's just, it's a messy place. So I, I guess I, I want to be careful, I get it, on stuff like that. So again, I'm not disagreeing with it because ninety percent of it, what I read, totally get. And when I, I couldn't, I can't even stand in a place like that. So, but I just wanted to play devil's advocate thinking of how many people are out there that live that way and this first picture way, not the rest of it, not the poop on the walls and things.
Okay, so three of you have questions. Counselor...
I, I think that, that the Councilman Bates raises a good sort of an issue. I agree, Mr. Mayor, with your analysis of this. This is not a clean house ordinance. It's perhaps unfortunate that that first picture was in there because that picture really is not congruous with the language of the, the ordinance. You know, if you look at just the language of this proposed ordinance, defines egress, defines all these things, it doesn't anywhere say you have to clean your house. You know, I would worry if many of you came to my house, what you might think about my house, but, but, because I'm not the greatest housekeeper in the world, I know some of you are shocked to hear that. But, but I think if we look at the, the language of the ordinance, the language of the ordinance very clearly, it does not establish a clean... it does not establish a clean house, ma'am.
I'm just commenting back on that first picture though, that we're talking about, it does talk about clutter, but it's very part of the reason behind that picture is inadequate, uh, means of egress. It's, it has got so much garbage there that if a fire broke out, you're not gonna be able to get out of that room to get outside. So that's the point of the picture, it's not the point of, it's a dirty house, it's, if something happens, you don't have a way of getting out. Councilman...
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, I don't mean to drag this out any longer than we have, but I just wanted to kinda hear a little bit. I think, Charlie, you have a suggestion, something with, uh, Casper Housing Authority? Do we have some kind of a mechanism in place, and I thought maybe Liz might be able to give us a little insight on that, if that'd be okay?
Here on our members of council, yes, the Casper Housing Authority, who you all contract with to do our housing, has got the emergency housing program available, at life steps if that's necessary. Uh, we also have Center Point where they have relocated individuals in crisis situations. So we've got other homes, um, available of the residents in North Casper, so that's what they do for you. And as we've cleaned up life steps and continue to make more and more residential beds available in these buildings, you know, you all hear about Building B and Building C and Building D and the gym, that's what this is all about. And they can house people even in the gymnasium, we've got the cots that have been provided by United Way, so that's what they do for you. Okay?
Do you have anything else?
I was gonna say exactly what you said, if there's little kids in the house, and I'm sure Chief Harshman could tell stories about this, that if there's no way to get down the hallway, a kid could die, so...
Okay. So, we wanted thumbs up, and if, so as far as the ordinance, the way it's written, um, we'll be asking for a thumbs up on that with respect to looking into, um, actionable items, like, if we find this, what can be done? You said you'd do some homework on that?
Yeah.
And was it one other thing we're doing?
Retaliation protection.
Oh, retaliation protection. So that's what it would be, if we give a thumbs up on that, it'd be those three items.
Mr. Mayor, do you mind, uh, could, could we go ahead and proceed to the portal piece and let citizens look at it and comment and so forth? Is that okay?
Sure.
Okay, all right. We will do that. Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Thanks for all your work on this.
Appreciate that.
Okay, staff requests.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, there are a couple situations that, uh, warrant, um, your attention and certainly our response that perhaps the budget season doesn't as effectively accom- accommodate. Um, as you can see in the memo provided by Mr. Cortez, as it relates to a Parks and Rec four position, we have, th- this past, uh, summer really highlighted a number of our vulnerabilities and weaknesses as it relates to our provision of a park service. Um, you probably noted, like I did, in the memo, that, uh, for this past summer, you recall it was a pretty wet summer, but the reality is, we still needed our irrigation systems to be up and running and operable and, and tuned up and, and in place at, uh, at a reasonable time. Um, we were not able to get our irrigation system up in a manner that responded to the, the stopping of the natural irrigation through rain and so forth, until a month later. And from a, from a performance standpoint, that is an unacceptable, uh, measurement. We really need to have irrigation systems in place,
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
uh, soon that, in order to be responsive and, and not lose turf investment and, and so on. And of course, respond to citizen complaints as, as those are, you know, invariably come in. The other side of it is, the other statistic that kinda bothered me was that even with that month, uh, delay in getting our turf irrigation systems in, up and running, we weren't able to get all of our systems engaged at all. And in fact, uh, according to Mr. Cortez, we were only able to turn on ninety-six percent of our systems at all throughout the entire summer, because of the lack of support and, uh, staff necessary to make all that happen. So the bottom line is this, we are asking for, uh, a Parks and Rec four position to be dedicated to dealing with irrigation. And I recognize that this is out of the process by which we would normally approach you to, to look at this. The reason that we have our sensitivity to the timeliness of this request is that we would really like to get this person up and running before the irrigation season is in full swing. And, uh, also to accommodate training necessary to help our current staff educate the new person with regard to the nuances of our entire irrigation system, in order to be ready in time for the, uh, the, the footrace that, uh, June and May often require. So, yes, we are asking you for this, uh, early, but I would tell you that we don't anticipate this to impact the general fund, um, beyond its ability to fund the remainder of the year with this position. Um, but it will be a, an FTE, um, expansion, and it would impact the general fund as it relates to the new fiscal year, in that we need to fund the position independent of the rest of the payroll, if you will. So, um, an unusual qu- request, but, but not with respect to the concerns that we have for the needs in the, uh, the Parks Department. As for the second request that we'd like you to consider, many of you are aware that, um, we have a position vacancy in the City Managers Department. Jeremy is no longer in our office, he now works for Liz in MBO. And, uh, i- it's a promotion for him, it's a good thing, you know, nothing to begrudge that, that process. What it also represents, however, is an opportunity for us to consider this position in a bit of a different light. And hopefully fill a need that we really haven't focused on in the past, in concert with the recommendations you're gonna see very soon. Um, and again, this is a timeliness issue as well, and I'll tell you why here in a minute. In just a few weeks, you're going to get, uh, a, a significant report from Andrew's Department as it relates to utilities for, in the form of the long-awaited business plans that are coming from water and sewer and, uh, and, and, and probably not too much on the heels with respect to the updates that the sanitation business plan is in need of as well. One of the chief recommendations that those business plans provide is the need for a PIO, and of course, the correlating recommendation for that type of a, a function. While I am not convinced that a full-time PIO is necessary despite the very, uh, appropriate, um, argument that that, those plans would make, I absolutely believe that in concert with the position opportunity that we have currently in the City Manager's Office with Jeremy's moving on, we believe that with the help of the utilities, we can turn that position into a market-driven, revenue-directed, uh, role that would help us focus on not only the needs that the business, uh, um, plans anticipate in the Utilities Division, but also help us direct our attention to revenue-driven activities that would help us hopefully create new, uh, revenue with appropriate market-guided guidance and, uh, advice to our community. We believe that with the business, uh, excuse me, with the, the, the funds that the utilities would provide to help support that position, that indeed, it would make room also for a part-time admin-type clerical position that would allow us to keep up with some of the more mundane, routine kinds of things that very often get dealt with in a less than timely fashion. The reason that we are approaching you now, as it relates to during the budget process, that would obviously, um, receive its authority on July one, is that, quite frankly, there are a lot of needs right now that we haven't had the opportunity to deal with effectively with, uh, since Jeremy's departure and with regard to the mounting clerical issues as well that we're, we're having a hard time keeping up with. So what I'm telling you is, that for the general fund, this is a proposal that is revenue-neutral, budget-neutral. For the utilities, it would require some investment on their part, uh, the support of which is substantiated to them in the business plans that you will receive final copies of here in, in, in the ensuing weeks. And so we do have timeliness issues with respect to these positions. I'm not here to twist your arm and tell you, "The city's gonna implode if you don't help us with this." I, I, I would not try to put you in that position, but I am willing to come and ask for your consideration if in fact you'd be inclined to, to wanna support these kinds of requests. Albeit, not in the traditional timeframe that we would rather come forward with requests of this nature.
I'm in.
Yes, I have no questions. Running people for thumbs.
My thumbs up.
Okay, good.
Thank you.
Take it, I don't need it.
Don't hear it.
Good. No, literally.
Part of it, that's actually what I'm saying, yeah.
So, Mr. City Manager, this will basically be built, this thirty thousand dollars will be built into the budgets for the enterprise funds to pay their costs, they pay their share.
That's correct. That's correct. Yeah. And we don't think it's significant enough of a, Mr. Mayor, come here. Of, uh, of variance that the rate models couldn't absorb, that, that small piece of investment. I, I think the rate model would accommodate this, this request. Thank you.
The position of your option would be part-time PIO?
The, the position, uh, Mr. Mayor, that would share duties with the Utilities Divisions and the City Managers Office, that is a full-time position. However, the remaining funds that we would have left over in the general fund would be adequate to support that part-timer clerical position. Yeah, that's what we're suggesting. Thank you. Thank you, very much.
Good. Move on to agenda review, and we also have liquor resolutions on there.
You gonna dive into that item?
Yep.
All right. Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, um, we had, uh, the opportunity, of course, to entertain a conversation with you a number of weeks ago, as it relates to some of the citizen-driven questions and, um, concerns that they had with our current liquor ordinances, as well as, uh, some of the weaknesses and vulnerabilities that all of you have, you know, uh, provided input for as well. In regards to those, those questions and that dialogue and so forth, uh, we've also had the opportunity to visit with the Liquor Division in Cheyenne. The mayor has engaged in some conversations as well. And, uh, um, we are at the point now where we think some resolutions that would help us deal with the, the sanctioning aspect of this, um, rather complex dialogue could, uh, could very well help us resolve. So what we would like to do is bring forward resolutions that would deal with some of the sanctioning issues that Mr. Henley can help describe for us in more detail. But we need to deal with that in such a way that we can attach those resolutions, if council sees fit, with the distribution of the liquor licenses you just renewed, so that those particular affected license holders would be on notice from day one with regard to the policy perspective that these resolutions would capture. More specifically, we're talking about appropriate use of bar and grill licenses, as well as appropriate operability concerns as it relates to some of our retail license holders. Um, before I turn the time over to Mr. Henley to give us some more of that detail, Mr. Mayor, would you wanna add anything on top of that, since you've been deeply engaged in that? Uh, we certainly can, absolutely.
Well, we'll just throw it out there, uh, for later, for a discussion later, 'cause I think we're talking possibly doing a resolution if we agreed to do it, but the, um, downtown area has had, kinda, it's had its boundaries, kinda said it was dubbed as the District down there. And so one of the ideas that we have just tried out this year would be from, uh, Memorial Day through Labor Day, uh, just try and do an open ca- or, uh, relaxing open container law in, in that set area of downtown. And, you know, we can set those parameters, but we're talking from the neck, maybe all the way down to, uh, Walnut Midwest, uh, First Street, not beyond First, not, maybe on this side of First Street. Uh, but nothing else would be relaxed, public in-talks is still there, people decided they wanna drink too much and partake too much in alcohol and, uh, it becomes an issue with public in-talks, all those laws would still be in place. But just to try it out for the summer months, just to see how it would go, allowing people to enter some downtown area, so... And there'd be a lot more to it, and I know there's a lot more that we, we have to flush out on it before we bring it forward, but just to kinda put it out there and see what your thoughts are on, so...
Will we have Mr. Henley stand up?
At least.
Did we get this in your pocket, Betty? If you, uh, need to take a look at the resolution, we can pass some of those around.
Yeah, I pulled from an email.
Well, we wanted to bring this to you, we're bringing this to you in a bit of a rush, just so that the license owners will have an entire year to modify their operations if they really want to, to utilize their licenses from the city that they've been provided, and we're giving them that opportunity. But we've talked about this before in past meetings, uh, and the state legislature addressed it back in two thousand seventeen, modifications, and they said basically, "We're not gonna let these people park it, we're not gonna have them be able to come to the council meetings, year after year after year and say, 'Oh jeez, I just can't get the, to get this off the ground, I don't have a good business plan.'" And so, in essence, we've had this in the past where they don't do anything at all. But now, I think we're seeing kind of the parking light, uh, operation going on here. People have a license, but they don't use it to full capacity even Monday a year, much less consistently over twelve months, period, until night. And so you wouldn't think that we would have to be, that you wouldn't have to be, uh, making, uh, specific requirements, but it seems to me this may be, uh, what, what's required here, just to set it out. Look, this is really the minimum baseline that we expect when you get a retail license. Minimum baseline when you get a restaurant license, and then a baseline when you get a bar and grill license. Because those are the ones, particularly the bar and grill and retail license, were limited in those, you're limited in those, the city's limited in those because it's population-based. And so therefore, uh, we, uh, in, in, in talking with staffers and, and also with the mayor, decided that we at least would bring this to you for your consideration. And so we, uh, we had this resolution, and this would be incorporated into an ordinance later on, but because that ordinance, because of the three-reunion requirement, it couldn't be completed until after the new license year, which we didn't see over the first. But we didn't wanna get this on record, we will put this, if, if you pass it, we will send it out to all of the, uh, the license, uh, owners here in, uh, in the city of Casper. And, uh, so that they would be on notice, and then of course, it would be available in your public comments later on, as they would come in, not only for this, when this is up, potentially, but also then for the three readings of the ordinance, which I know... three readings and the ordinance, which I know that we're looking at the possibility of expanded open container area as well as timeframe that the mayor was talking about. But we also have a couple of new state statutes. The Beer Freedom Act was enacted session before last and then also something similar to the Beer Freedom Act, the manufacturers basically letting owners of those operations take their product out and have like a long beverage permit essentially for 24-hour periods. There are some other type of minor changes within the ordinance that we can correct, a couple of typographical errors. We have some of the forms are still dated 19 blank, update those to 20 blank. So in any event, that's what we have here. You know, we brought this down to operational means, an ongoing weekly basis for 12 months per year. And we have to do, basically, open up their business and have it available to do what the license was issued for. And then we actually, you potentially will go ahead and say, well, that means you're going to be open at least five, eight hours per day, five days per week for a retail license or a bar and grill license. And for a restaurant license, because that could maybe just be a supper club, maybe only five days a week, five hours a day. So that's, those are the essences of the changes that we've proposed here. And certainly, these are not anywhere in stone, but given kind of the problems we've seen over the past few years here in Casper, this might be a way to approach it, but I know that you may have some other ideas as well.
Councilman.
I like your approach. One thing we might, it concerns me a little bit, under paragraph A, section one, we talk about 12 months, five days a week, 50 weeks a year, 12 months, whatever, that somehow we got to count some holidays in there somewhere. I mean, right now, it says you got to be five days a week.
Right.
Every week, so.
Right, at least for 50, 50 of the weeks.
Well, I guess that's part of it, but that wouldn't allow a guy with a one-man operation to shut down and.
No, we have to hire some people.
Yeah, okay.
Listen here.
I guess to kind of add to this, the main reason behind it is we still have a retail liquor establishment that has essentially, it's, they park their license, I mean, they put alcohol inside of a building, they put somebody in there periodically to open it up.
Right.
Just enough to say, I'm functioning. And that, you know, and this has been going on for years. So it's just another way of not functioning and parking a license.
But there's never an open bar eight to five. It's, you can come and charter the place if you want.
Right.
Which is what's being done.
Right, yeah. But then when you look at like the bar and grill, I mean, you know, it's, you could look at, we set one aside for John Johnson and he said, within X amount of time, I'm going to have that built out and it's going to meet the standards of being a bar and grill. And if I don't, then I'll give you that license back. So this is essentially just making sure that what that use of the license is for is what it's being used for. And if you're not using it for that, but you meet the requirements of a restaurant liquor license, then we'll move you back to that. The reason by the resolution obviously is we're not going to get an ordinance done prior to issuing licenses this year, because they all go out here in the next couple of weeks. And so we want to notify them before they have the brand-new license in hand, this will go along with it saying, this is the requirements. Next year by this time, these requirements are in place. And at the same time, I think we're identifying the deadline date for the renewal.
Renewal.
Renewal, and that's going to go out with them too, so that when they get it, they're going to have to save the date in there saying that this is your date, that you have to renew by end of, and then we're going to finish all that up as far as, at a later time in ordinance, is that correct? As far as like the one to five day and six to 10?
Correct.
Okay, can we talk about that?
Sure.
What we're looking at.
Sure.
So then when we talked about the renewal date itself, people just coming in and saying, yeah, I'm late, I know it, I'll be late next year, they'll know what the renewal date is. And the discussions we've had, and that's what we'll need, we'll need to talk about over this next year, is after that renewal date hits, if they miss it, one to five days, I think we're talking $250 per day fine, and then, and then six to 10 days, $500 fine, and on day 11, your license is up for grabs. So we're at least giving them a fine until, we're not just saying, you missed it, today's the fifth, or today's the sixth, you should have had it in by the fifth, we're taking your license away. It's going to be a monetary penalty for each day until we hit day 11. And if you don't get it taken care of by them, which is ridiculous, if you don't, then it would just be up for grabs.
Well, and I agree with about 99% of what you were just saying, Mr. Mayor. I think there are a couple of things that we need to be, make sure everybody understands is really important here. One is that in visiting with the liquor authorities down in Cheyenne, if they don't meet the deadlines for having their license renewed, we have no discretion. It's, you know, it's, they lose their license. And they pointed out to us down there that Casper right now has one more license than we actually should have according to the population formula. Now that might change with the new census, but these guys need to realize that they're playing a high-stakes game. If they're tardy on these things, it's not just like we're being mean or anything. To some degree, we have no discretion. That's if we can't get them renewed, you know, by March 31st, when their license expires. If they can't, they're done. And, you know, no questions, end of sentence. The other thing is that, you know, like, looking at this proposed resolution here, I didn't notice anything in there for, if a business came in and said, I need to come in and completely remodel my facility and I'm going to be shut down for a month to do that. Maybe we might want to consider some allowance in there, you know, if there's a lot of fight remodeling or something going on, that might be something that we want to think about. And there was one other point, but I forgot what it was. It must have been just really a flash of brilliance, but.
We'll come back and comment on it. I think we're being overly generous myself. I mean, a deadline's a deadline and as I said, if you.
Oh, I know what it was, if you don't mind me buttoning this, Mayor. Rather than using the term fine, I think that we might want to use the term civil penalty or something like that in there, because fine carries all the criminal connotations and everything. If we couch it as a fee or something like that, I'm sure that Mr. Henley could more freely draft that than I could. Where it's, you know, where it really is, you know, just okay, you know, if you're, you missed this deadline by this much, you have to pay this much extra. Because if we look at it that way and stay away from that work fine, I think that gets us out of a lot of problems.
I think that's my previous career coming out, saying, well, fine, so. But what I was saying was, you know, I kind of look at it, you know, look at the industry I'm in with real estate now, it's like if I don't have my fees in and paid by December 31st, I have to do business on January 1st. It makes absolutely no sense to put a deadline in place and then give grace period for whatever amount of time a deadline should be a deadline, but.
That reminds me, I got to pay my 1963 income tax tomorrow.
You should get that done.
This'll fix it. Good, good job, this'll fix it.
Okay.
I do have one question, Mr. Mayor. Is it still true that we have one of our licenses owned by a family so that once a year they can have a Christmas party?
Yes, I do.
I've never heard that. Flurg, you know what you have?
Your Honor, I have not heard that and I don't think there's any, are you talking about a retail license?
Yes.
We don't have any retails that are inactive. I mean, they are all active and have actual places, so I don't know.
Okay.
I don't, I don't believe that to be true.
Okay.
Good.
That was a few years ago. Pretty sure.
You have to roll a Christmas party.
They catch it up with you, Bob.
Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if it's okay, we'll bring those resolutions forward on Tuesday night and seek your formal adoption, if you will. I wouldn't do it. Thank you.
Good.
Very good.
All right, so then agenda review. Anything on the next week's agenda that stands out that we need to talk about or people have questions about?
Couple, a couple of your brewery licenses that we've given you a heads-up on are going to be in place for you to consider. And beyond that, I'd say, you know, we've got a couple of major projects in the former K Street and CY Booster Station. I don't see anything other, otherwise it is, you know, riot inciting or anything like that.
And then as far as the work session for the 24th?
I'm going to be among the missing that day.
I will too.
Mr. K, 24th?
As far as the 24th is concerned, Mr. Mayor, we do plan to bring some fleshed-out materials with respect to sanctions that would, you know, likely culminate in ordinance discussions that council will, you know, discuss further properly.
Good. And that community could wish funding then for that one? I guess whoever's gone, if we can just get their input.
Very good, very good, absolutely. Mr. Mayor, would it be okay to consider a deadline for the entire group for that feedback by chance?
On your community promotions voting?
Right.
Yes, we should.
Those that are going to be gone, are you just gone that day or like prior to the?
I'm gone that week.
That week?
Your Honor, I may, so if you want me to compile them like we normally do to get them in the packet for the 24th, if we could maybe have them turned in by next Wednesday, that would allow me time to get it in for Friday.
Okay.
I may be able to call in, but we'll see. Oh, great, okay.
That works. Thank you very much.
All right, on to legislative review.
Nice work.
It's been a good legislative session for us. We're pretty pleased. Give you a couple highlights, I direct your attention, spreadsheet that Jolene prepared for us tonight. Surface water passed, it's on its way to the governor's desk, we're very pleased with that. The optional municipal tax legislation passed, it's on its way to the governor's desk as well. Direct distribution, thankfully, we have another two years with and I'm very happy to see that on its way to the governor's desk also. Wind turbines died, grateful to see, although it does like, look like we may be able to bury them in coal mines. The health insurance legislation died, taxing governmental property died, and, you know, those things are very helpful to see off the table for this session. Jolene, do you want to add anything else to that report?
May I just give a great shout-out to our attorney, John Henley, and Representative Sweeney. I've been sitting here so long, I just don't even want to get up, I'm sorry. Your Honor, counsel, I would like to give a shout-out to John Henley, our city attorney and Representative Sweeney, and Senator Landon, who really worked very, very hard to get, to bring SF 22 to us after four hard years of working on it. There are a lot of good things on here to us, that's the biggest thing that happened, so.
That's for a job.
And Mayor Matt Hall, who spent two or three weeks down in Cheyenne lobbying for our causes.
I don't remember what the B bottom amendment was on Senate File 57, the direct distribution.
He was trying to weight it a little more heavily towards the small towns.
So that didn't happen?
We were okay with that, but I don't think that happens.
Okay. That's really kind of too bad, but whatever.
Okay, anything else on legislative?
No, sir. Thank you for all the help and the phone calls and the emails you all sent, that really does push the needle for us. And I couldn't tell you how much I really appreciate that. Thank you. Okay.
He is one of our most successful.
Great session, yeah.
Go around the table and ask Mr. Mayor to look. Councilman Powell?
I regret to say I missed the Disabilities Awareness Day on the 7th. Was anybody in the room there?
Thanks.
Maxwell?
How did it go, Max?
Seemed like it went well. I don't know. I covered it, so.
I can't, I have nothing else.
Okay, councilman, you were?
Well, just very briefly, the municipalities convention was another good and informative session. It was kind of discouraging to have to miss a lot of the meeting presentations, to have to go down to the legislature to talk to them. But a couple of different things that I want to mention. Many people, I don't think, realize that the, you know, when Carter walks into the room, whether if it's at the legislature, at the Lamb meetings, or whatever, he brings with him an aura of influence and respect that I think that serves the city of Casper and frankly serves the state very, very well. And I think we're really lucky to have him and to have his talents and the respect that he has engendered all around the state over the years. And I want to just bring that out and mention that, really, really compliment you for that, Carter. That's an impressive thing. One of the sessions that I went to down there at the meeting, and I do want to bring this up because it's something that I'm going to be kind of beating the drum for a little bit in the future, is a crisis intervention idea. And we all know what CPR, cardio-pulmonary resuscitation is. And I think that all of our employees and everybody are probably pretty much trained in that. There's a suicide prevention program that is kind of similar to that. And one of the, and I really want to try to get this implemented, where we get our people trained on this. One of the things that really impressed me and quite frankly, really surprised me, is that they talked about that statistically, if you take a, say, a thousand people and you train them on CPR, you train them on this corresponding suicide prevention thing, they call it QRP, Question, Persuade, Refer, that those same-sized groups of people, the statistical likelihood that someone is going to come in contact with someone who is contemplating on the verge of suicide or something, is very, very, very much greater than the statistical likelihood that a similarly sized group of people is going to come in contact that's in need of CPR. And I listened to that and I just, that to me was just really eye-opening, that if you really truly want to save lives, that, yeah, taking, nothing away from CPR, hell, I've been CPR trained for, you know, since when you got, you beat on a rock or something, you know, I see Tim's over there laughing at me, but there's not, but this, you know, this, this crisis intervention thing, I think something that we really kind of need to look into, and I'm sure that the police and fire have already done some things like this, but I think it might be something we might want to look at for all of our. But I think it might be something we might want to look at for all of our employees, just much as we would the CPR things. And, and I thought that was just an excellent thing. And, you know, you talk about these meetings and these conventions, and the term convention has a bad image, that, you know, you go there and you have a great time and all that stuff. But you really do go and you learn valuable things if you can go to these meetings and stuff. But that's all I wanted to talk about.
Councilor Hocken?
Yeah, I concur with his first comments, and Carter, he does us a lot of good, but don't let this get carried away and want to run for governor, okay?
Well, we pointed out that there were those of us that went down there to guard him so that no one could steal him.
Councilman Johnson?
Um, I don't have anything for tonight, I guess.
Okay. All right, so we will adjourn this meeting, however, we have a special meeting.
Mr. Mayor, I would be happy, given the late hour that you all have put in to defer the executive session to next week, if that would help, council?
Is that good for timeliness for the matter?
Yep.
Sean, do you want to do that, or do you want to stick around?
I mean, definitely, Sean.
I'm sorry, I'm very sorry.
You're twisting my arm.
We don't want to take it away. Okay, well, then we'll adjourn. Thanks, Sean.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.